Well, I will go ahead and turn it over to whoever needs to be turned over to if it hasn't been already.
That would be Chief Royce and I'll make a quick handoff to him.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Madam Mayor's Commissioners, I'd like to thank you for taking time out of your day today. Slade Fire Department has been performing what we call performance analysis since 2009. Our accreditation requires us to give some type of an annual report to the governing body either in written form. And we've chose to do it a little bit one step further in a presentation form so that that would enable some questions and interaction than just looking at a bunch of numbers if they don't make sense to you. Please feel free to ask any questions as we go through this. I don't forsake it taking the entire time. We kind of were running behind last year. I presented this in a C I M last year. We didn't get really a chance due to the COVID to make a presentation. So we're catching up. Usually what the process is, is one of the station captains will would present and collect all this information. However, due to the issues we've had this year, I told them I'd go ahead and and take care of it this time. So please feel free to ask any questions. I'll give just a really quick overview real quick. Then we'll switch to the PowerPoint, which is in your your handouts also. Slade Fire Department currently staffs four engines and four ambulances, one heavy rescue and one ladder truck, as well as one battalion chief and one medical officer, all on 24-hour shifts. That's a total of a minimum daily staffing of 25 per shift. The department also has two administrative assistants, three chief officers and two inspectors and a mechanic that work on a 40-hour work week. As you might imagine, COVID had quite a direct impact on our operations this past year. You'll notice a lot of our numbers may be a little bit lower than they were in normal times. Usually we anticipate a three to 5% increase in 911 volume as well as inter-facility transfers. But obviously there were some things that happened this past year. I will I will mention this. One of the things that we did do is we made a policy decision not to perform any inter-facility transfers on COVID-positive patients where COVID was their main medical condition. And we continued to transfer, obviously, emergency life-threatening situations. And if they happen to be positive, so be it. But if COVID was their only clinical sign, we informed the hospital that they would have to make other arrangements to do those inter-facility transfers. And looking back, that was a very good decision on our part and Chief Pearson's part in that it really did prevent any, I won't say any, but a lot of our people from being taken out of work by being positive. As a matter of fact, we had a total of seven total personnel who missed work due to being positive COVID. Two were inspectors, five were operations personnel, and we cannot go back and trace that they got that from a patient. It was usually a family member or a child that they got down. So I feel extremely fortunate that something didn't come through and wipe us out. There were maybe heard poor stories of other departments just just taking out entire stations or shifts. We're very, very fortunate. With that, if I'll ask Jacob to start the PowerPoint, we'll move forward. Okay, you can move to the next, please. This is our mission statement. Respond quickly, perform professionally, save lives and property, be caring compassionate to all, make sure everybody goes home. Okay, we're considered an all-hazards fire department, which basically means we can handle any any emergency hazard there is, whether it be we're an ALS fire department, advanced life support, which means we do transport patients, obviously. We can also do aircraft firefighting. We can do hazardous material response as well as technical rescue. And in fact, we do have two teams, both on Kansas Regional Response, which is run by the Kansas State Fire Marshal's Office for both the 11 north-central counties in Kansas that we would respond in a hazardous material situation or technical rescue. Technical rescue would be building collapses, trench rescues, high-angle rescues off of a high building, things like that.
Grain elevator.
Grain elevator, yeah, water tower. We don't, we do, we don't do underwater, any type of underwater search and rescue, but we do do above water or surface water such as swift water rescues like flooding. And then we also have a prevention and education section headed by the Fire Marshal. We also have a canine search and rescue program along with arson detection. We're the only only department in the state that has a dual-purpose canine, which is Hoke. He can do search and rescue and arson. He's been deployed to North Carolina in 2019, I believe. And some of our swift water people went to Houston back in 2018. So we have gone outside the state with other members from Kansas. Okay, Jacob? The department is broken down into four divisions: fire administration, prevention, fire suppression, and then the EMS division. Those are all headed up by a chief officer currently and right now we are full on FTEs. We are at maximum staffing, which is 83 shift personnel and nine staff personnel for a total of 92. It's been a while since we got back up to to full staffing. This is just some information from the what the Fire Marshal's Office is responsible for. They perform prevention and education. So be it. Education was kind of curtailed with COVID this year. Commercial building inspections, plans review fire systems, testing and fire systems, fire investigations. The plans review Troy Long is our Fire Marshal. He's been extremely busy, obviously, with the additions at Schwan in Great Plains are really keeping him busy as as some of the other departments here in the city are. Okay. Jacob? They did probably take the hardest hit within our division or within our department this year from COVID. However, it did bring to light the fact that every single member of our department, except for the administrative assistants, all the chief officers, all the inspectors, including Fire Marshal Long, continue to maintain their medical certifications and their physical certifications. And we were able to use one of our inspectors and put him back out onto the onto a truck, so to speak. All of our chief officers have the capability that in a bind, we can actually staff any apparatus or ambulances, which is a huge advantage on certain situations and assist with overtime. Even our our emergency vehicle technician, Casey Stevenson, is certified as an EMT and a firefighter, too. And if worse comes to worse, we could utilize him in those positions. And he has worked in those positions for us. Inspections were down a little bit, obviously, with a lot of the places being closed. Our part-time inspector, Roger Newell, was one of the unfortunate people that were laid off. So we only got to about 50% of our commercial inspections this year. Also, the next one was new builds. I'm sorry, Jacob, if you would go to the next one. Commercial constructions obviously was down again to COVID. A lot of people weren't building everything. A lot of stuff was on on hold, as you can see. Jacob, next one. We had zero fire deaths last year. We had eight fire injuries. And those were obviously you can't get any lower than zero. The last time we had zero was in 2017, I believe. The fire injuries, none of them were critical. So despite not being able to get out and do a good education program, people were very very cognizant of fire safety. Okay, Jacob? I will draw your attention to two of the programs that Fire Marshal Long instigated in early last year, really towards the end of 19, most of 20. And we've really seen some very good success with these. The first being Compliance Engine, which was the third-party testing company. That program continues to identify unlicensed city contractors that were coming into the city and continue to come into the city that tried to perform inspections and maintenance on our fire systems. And that catches them because they have to file with Compliance Engine and if they're not properly licensed properly licensed by the city, we have to inform them that they cannot do business here until they do achieve those licenses. That's also freed up valuable reinspection time by Troy and his inspectors. And we have, this is a thing that we've noticed, too, is it assures the inspections and testings are being done. And as an example of that, in 2020, we had 107 system alarms alarms that we had to respond to that were ended up being malfunctions from some type of a mechanical issue. So that was 107 times that the alarm would come in, we would respond fire engines and it ended up being a system malfunction due to mechanical. This year, we've had six so far. So this Compliance Engine has caught the maintenance that was not being done on a lot of these fire systems and is making sure that that's being done, which is in turn saving us from going out on false alarms, freeing up our resources for for emergencies. The other situation is last year, we moved to an in-house fire alarm registration. We had, we were paying a third-party company, 22% was their fee out of the alarm fee to manage it for us. We found we could do it in-house at better savings than that. And plus, the information we were getting is more reliable and we can kind of stay on top of it. We felt as the company was not performing up to what they they said they would do. And therefore, we were not getting accurate informations, information. And that has shown a dramatic increase in registrations as required because we can kind of stay on them a little bit more that they have to. And that's by ordinance that I think was passed in 2015 or 16. Okay, Jacob? Okay, you can move on to the next. Now, this graph shows a five-year total of incidents and there's going to be, not only did COVID play into this, but the last two years we were in the middle of, which was one of our goals, is to get on a single reporting system. And that's why you're going to see some discrepancies in these numbers. Before 2019, in fact, in 2019, we were operating in three separate reporting systems, which was a nightmare. A lot of duplication. They didn't talk to each other. We moved over to what's the company's called Image Trend, and they handle both fire and EMS. And 2020 was our first full year of operating under one reporting system. And again, COVID had a little bit to do with it, but you'll notice some of the numbers were down because the duplication that was being done from 2018 on with Firehouse and EMS charts. And in 2019, we had three types of systems that we tried to get them all into under one. And it took, we knew we were going to have a year of 2019 where the data was going to be a little bit skewed a little bit. And this was the first year. We're very happy with it. It's been the thing we've done. It's given us a true, true indication of our workload and alarm load. Okay, Jacob, thank you. EMS continues to be our most common call for call volume. We're at about 87.4%. As you can see, the total 8,039 alarms, 6,894 were EMS incidents. I broke down the top, about the top six or eight. Sick persons were up tremendously again, obviously, due to the COVID issues. Falls continue to be one of our highest EMS call volumes. Inter-facility transfers were down. And a lot of that probably had to do with some of the policy that we decided not to perform those transfers on COVID-positive patients. And the other fact was during the height of most of the COVID, other facilities weren't accepting transfers. Slade Regional was trying to get to transfer and Wichita was full, Topeka was full, Kansas City was full one day and then opened up and then they'd be full again. So that was that was more than likely the the reason for our transfers to be down. Usually they're over a little bit over 400. Okay. Just the next numbers here are actual fire calls. These are the top top fire calls. Fire incidents cover everything from grass fires to structure fires to car fires to R V fires. It's kind of a, we operate under what's known as the National Incident Fire Reporting System. We don't determine how to classify those reports. The federal government does. False alarms, again, were down. Good intent means everything from somebody drives by and sees some smoke coming from behind a house or something. Basically, it entails responding to the call and not really finding any type of a hazard or emergency. Patient assists, same thing. We get a lot of patient assists where people will call in for, a lot of times it's assisting people, believe it or not, back into bed or invalid type people on uncertain situations where we actually don't transport. Hazardous condition could mean anything from a gas spill to an electrical line down. And then obviously, severe weather and hazmat were negligible in our responses for fire. Okay, thanks. Jacob? And this, I just wanted to give you a little indication. You could literally see how the percentages went down. This is a year-to-year comparison. They started dropping, obviously, in March when things really started hitting. And this is for EMS calls only. They started kind of dropping in March, in April, May, June, and then they were starting to uptick a little bit from September on and starting to kind of rebound from that. A lot of, obviously, a lot of reasons why a lot of people thought that people didn't want to go to the hospital, whether they should have, things they normally would have called in for. Either they realized weren't that serious or weren't a true emergency, or they did not want to expose themselves to the hospital for any COVID-related issues. Found that interesting. They started upticking just a little bit back to normal. Okay, Jacob? This is just a quick snapshot of this. This doesn't mean only these stations responded this many times a day. This, I broke this down to show you the number of calls in that station's area. We many times respond multiple stations on certain incidents. But I wanted to let you see, and I did this last year, so you could kind of see the differences that as a matter of fact, at Station 1, there were seven and a half calls in their first response area, which obviously includes north and downtown area, which is where you would imagine them with with the population issues and so forth. So that just boils out to about 23 calls per shift, which is normally about 26 or 27 is what we've been seeing last year. So again, we saw a downturn in total numbers, obviously, related to the COVID issue. Okay, Jacob? Give you a quick overview of our training division. We have a chief of training. This is important, as a matter of fact, for a lot of reasons. I S O just called me Friday, as a matter of fact. We're due for our five-year reevaluation or reinspection will occur in March. We're currently an I S O two-rated department, which is in the top 4% of all departments of 39,416. There's about 1,600 I S O twos. And then I S O one is obviously the highest. And there's only 324 of those in the country. So we don't anticipate any issues, but it's very important when they come out because, Jacob, you can move to the next one. They look at things. They audit us for certain types of training verification and documentation. And this is just an example of some of the mandatory I S O hours that are required per year, per department member. You can see the different headings and different subtitles, and then the amount of hours needed per per member, both on the EMS side and on the fire side. And when they come out in March, they'll be looking at that. I S O looks at three different things. They look at fire department operations. They look at water supply systems in the disbursements or distributions system that the city has. And they look at the 911 communication center. And then of those three, they're each weighted a certain amount. And of those three areas, a score is obtained based on a 100-point scale. Last year, or we did our last evaluation in 2016. I think we were at 70, almost 73 points out of 100, which made it to be a class two. Okay, Jacob? This gives you an idea of the number of hours from last year to this year. Obviously, we had a lot more time for for training for a number of reasons. One of the things that we did is we instituted a new training platform, an online training platform that enabled our people to take multiple classes. We were able to convert Station 1 and Station 2 to virtual learning, just like everyone else more or less had to. We were planning on doing that at one time. We went ahead and did it early or late last year, early 2020, which turned out to be a blessing in disguise, as a matter of fact, because it enabled us to to not have to get together in large groups to maintain our our training hours. And then again, those will be the hours that they're going to be looking at when they come. They'll audit those hours and see what we've done with that. So, Jacob? These are staffing levels. I think I put this in there two years ago for you in 2004 versus 2021. We've maintained level staffing. And if you go across, you can literally see why some of that has changed. As in, in 2004, there were a couple of different engines that had four people, which is the national standard. In 2013, we put the fourth EMS unit on, took those two people, manned it, a fourth ambulance without adding any additional personnel. And this is just how it plays out every day. Over there on the right, you'll see Engine 1 will have three personnel, the rescue and the ladder, three. Each ambulance has two personnel, even all the way down to our battalion chief and our medical officer. And then eight to five staff is over there, too. So minimum to man every single piece of equipment is 25 persons per 24-hour shift. Okay, Jacob? Challenges for 2021. Looking forward, relocation to Station 4. Again, I think most of the members without, I think Commissioner France was not on the commission then. We did a study session at Station 4, I think in 2018. I'm almost sure it's October 2018. And showed you, and you can imagine what happened with the social distancing difficulties, challenges we had this year, as small as that station was. That's still a challenge for us for equipment-wise, and it was very prominent this year with with COVID. We hope that that can be upped a little bit to the unfunded or in some format. It's been on the plan since 2012. Increase of 911 emergency responses, inter-facility transfers, even though they were down this year, we still usually anticipate and historically have been about a three to four, maybe 5% increase every year. One of the things we're seeing now, despite being the fact that we are at full staffing, is a shortage of paramedics. And that's a nationwide issue right now. That we're seeing a declining number of applicants that want to get into the fire service, especially we, most of our paramedics, currently we have three in class. So we've kind of turned inward and grown our own. One will finish up in June. Two will be done early 2022. We've, we use Hutchinson Community College as our paramedic school. They indicate to us, they usually see anywhere but pre-COVID 24 to 26 per class. Now they're lucky to get 10 in a class. So this is a problem across the country of trying to get quality applicants here. I've talked to city manager. We've come up with recruiting, hopefully, some things that that we could possibly help out in that. Station alerting. You may have seen this before. It's been on the sub-CIP list since 2018. Basically, it's to decrease call processing times, is to automate the actual alarm system from 911 dispatch to how we receive our alarms and how we are dispatched. That's basically, there's technology out there that would increase that process. We do notice a lot of times that the front end is where we see not actually a delay, but the the most difficulty when the calls are coming in and the call processing time from the 911 side. If we went to an automated system, that would increase that tremendously. We still try to get first responders, a minimum of five minutes on scene from the time of call to what we call wheel stop to to actually at the scene. And we are, we are under that right now. We're hitting it better than 90%, but we think we can do better on that. Facility maintenance. Overall, I know the city's addressed this in many, many formats, parks and everyone else. We're no different. I looked it up today. Station 1 is 71 years old, Station 2 is 69 years old, Station 3 is 38 years old, and Station 4 is 53 years old. So we all know that, just like a house, things need to be maintained and taken care of. And that's just an issue that we're no different. Our facilities might get used a little bit different due to the fact that we have kitchens and bunk rooms and quote actual living facilities, more toilets, more showers, things like that, that get used on a daily basis versus maybe some of the other city facilities. But we're seeing an increase in in our maintenance on on those. Employee cancer prevention, also health and wellness. We've made some strides in that this past year, and we're continuing to move. One of the things we've done is we've, we now have heavy-duty, we call them extractors. They're nothing more than than heavy-duty washing machines for turnout gear, our fire gear. And we have them in three out of the four stations now. So the gear can be laundered appropriately by manufacturer specifications. And we've also have introduced and installed air purifying systems in all of our ambulances now. And again, COVID pushed that, but it's also for, we're going to see how that goes on the ambulances for now. And my intention is to probably move forward and actually do that for the fire apparatus, too, in the cabs. A lot of the studies are showing that the firefighters respond to a fire, do the work, even though we do what we call gross decon, we kind of hose hose them off before they come back to the station, just sitting in the cab on the way back in that, in their their turnout gear, kind of off-gas to a point that the breathing, we've already seen, I think I sent a C I M out a while back about the cancer, certain types of cancer firefighters are seeing that three and four times more likely to acquire due to all the different types of chemicals and combustion that they're around. The last thing is the review of our value of continuing our accreditation. We'd like to move more to an outcome-based organization. And we've just looked at recently, looking at the expense of this, of continuing accreditation and seeing what the benefits, whether they justify the means. We already do best practices. We can already perform best practices. And we not do up for accreditation again till 2023, so we have plenty of time. We did, one of the things that prompted this is the amount of time it's starting to take on our staff to document. A lot of the departments that have accreditation have a full-time person dedicated to it. And another thing is it's just getting, it's getting costly. We looked at it from a cost perspective. What are we really getting out of it? Are we seeing anything operationally that we can't already be doing? One other factor in that is Um, one other factor in that is we do, and we do several things that we don't get any credit for, uh, in accreditation that no one else does. So those are the, the issues on that. But those are just some, um, challenges that we're looking ahead for, for, uh, this coming year. I guess we're already in 21. And as we move forward. So with that, I'd be glad to take any questions you may have on anything you've seen or want to know about.
Questions from the commissioner, Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, Chief, as far as the inter facility transfers. Uh, I, I've heard comments from, I'll just say, different sides of the aisle, uh, that it's a profitable business. But then I hear the answer that is, yeah, if we had personnel to take these folks at the drop of a hat, uh, has there been any consideration of establishing a separate ambulance transfer service either under the of a hospital or a private company, if, if, if manpower is our major limiting?
Right, uh, we're continuing to have discussions with, with, with the hospital on that. I know Chief Mulligan attempted to, to create, when he was here, a part time type on call program to address that. But the fact that number one, they're so unpredictable is, is this the driving factor. Another driving factor is to find qualified critical care paramedics in our location that are not already working for us and would do that whenever they needed to be called in in the middle of the night or so forth. Another thing we are, we are, uh, and it was one of the, I don't know if you remember, it was one of the recommendations from Harold Cohen and TriData when they did the EMS study, is to continuously, uh, look at our transfer policy. And right now Chief Pearson i- is getting with the hospital and we, we're reviewing it with them constantly. It, it's, it would be nice to be able to schedule that. It's just, it, it's, it's, it's got a lot of, lot of different moving parts. It's very, very difficult. Uh, on the hospital side, yeah, it would be, it would be, uh, very expensive for them to have, to maintain their own transport. Um, you know, we're, we're, I've said this once, I'll say it again, we're kind of an island. Newton is, is much like us, but they have 30, 45 minute turnarounds in Wichita. Uh, Lawrence, 30 minutes to Kansas City. Our, our one time turnaround to Kansas City for a transfer is almost seven and a half hours. And depending, and that's depending on what time of the day it is, if you don't get caught up in traffic. Wichita transfers easily three and a half to four hours. So, um, that's on going.
Yeah, Chief did a good job of covering it. I, I would add, I have been in some conversations about an alternate, uh, provider and, and the hospital's very complimentary of, of our staff, our equipment and our training. And so there seems to be a preference for our department, and it, it really just becomes a scheduling and a workload challenge for all of us.
Is, at one time, there was a, a private transfer company in town who took some of the load. Are they still in business or has that gone, gone defunct?
They are. They are still here. Life Touch is still here. Uh, they, uh, more, theirs is more of a scheduling. It's, it's ran by just a, a, a wife and a husband. So they, they just don't have the people to be on call 24/7.
Okay, so they do scheduled stuff, uh, as they can?
As they can, right.
Okay.
Are they, are they contracted with preferentially through the hospital? Meaning, does the hospital contact them in the event of a transfer? Are they contacted first to maybe ease some of the load on, on us providing those transfers?
I don't believe they have. I don't know if there is an actual calling tree or what their policy, the hospital's policy is. My, my understanding is the hospital usually calls us first. And if we can't do it, then they do make arrangements with either another agency or organization, whether it's, uh, out of Wichita. There have been times when other EMS organizations will come here and perform a transfer.
Chief, you talked a little bit about inspections. Now, I know we do inspections, fire inspections on new properties. Is that correct? When properties are being constructed?
Right, we do plan reviews and, and yeah, there is part of the inspection process as it moves through to, uh, certificate of occupancy, yes.
Okay, then do we also do inspections of businesses and so on throughout the year, uh, when they're up and operating? And how often does that happen?
That's annually. We do that annually. Uh, we're gonna probably have to make a little bit of arrangements now. One of the people that used to do that was a part time, uh, person named Roger Newell. Some of you may remember Roger. He did a great job for us. Uh, he retired, I think after 30 or 35 years on the fire department, then worked another five or 10 for us. He finally decided to retire again, so we're going to have to look for replacement of Roger. Roger got a lot of those done.
Now, we, it's my understanding, we, is there a charge for doing that, or is that something we just do as a way of supporting the businesses?
Uh, no, there's no charge. We do not charge the, we do not charge that. We don't have any type of a business license or, or systems license.
Right, so I, you know, that's, that's a benefit, I think, that most people probably don't think of is that when they visit a business, they know that the fire department's been there sometime in the not too distant past and has at least reviewed the systems and made sure that they were, uh, up to speed on requirements and so on.
Absolutely, and, and to that, uh, matter, Commissioner France, we have not really had a, a major commercial structure fire here in a, a long time. In fact, if you go in by incident or you're going by damage, we had a, a small fire at roadway end last year, which caused the most damage of any fire we've had. And we didn't even put it out. The sprinkler system put it out. It was all water damage. So it, it did its job. Uh, but commercial fire safety is, uh, and that's total, in my opinion, that's totally, uh, due to the efforts of, of, uh, Troy Long and the Fire Marshal's Office and Roger, when he was out doing it. Roger would do easily 16 to 1700 inspections a year for us, working part time.
Chief touched on compliance engine a little while ago, and if you recall when the, the report from when we made that transition, in addition to the inspections that you're talking about, there's a code obligation that the owners have their systems recharged and have hood suppression systems and certain things inspected on a, on a regular schedule by a licensed contractor. And so uh, inspection staff was following up on that and had a difficult time both in terms of licensed contractors and just staying on top of uh, contractors and businesses to meet those deadlines. Compliance engine automated a lot of that, uh, may standardize the communication and as Chief mentioned earlier, for anyone to be able to enter information into that system, they had to be licensed contractor. So it, it really improved the efficiency of our inspections, uh, department by getting us consistency in, in terms of the communication and follow up and, and getting licensed contractors straightened out. So it was a huge improvement.
And, and that's another reason for the, the commercial fire, the, the commercial businesses that do have commercial fire protection systems. We now know through compliance engine, because they're scheduled on their own. We, we're not involved in that. We're only involved when they have a, a problem. We know they're getting done. Uh, restaurants require their hood system to be done twice a year. And I can guarantee you, there were restaurants and we, just because of our manpower of us not getting to them, we weren't being able to get to them twice a year, be likely to get to them once a year. Now that option's not there. And that's, that's what I was saying, that I, we've seen a decrease in in false or in meca- uh, mechanical alarm systems coming in as fire alarms from last year to this year. It's solely, in my opinion, because of the compliance engine. Uh, they're being held accountable, the, the businesses are.
And, and not to belabor the point, but we went from a paper notification tracking system to a shared database where the contractors are now logging that they did the inspection, what their inspection findings are in that database, and then our inspection staff can monitor that data versus try, try, you know, um, trying to chase all that data. Anything else?
Um, I think I've got, I've, I've got a couple unless Commissioner Hoppe or Commissioner Ryan has something that they, that they would like to ask.
Nothing here.
I, I just had one quick question, and you mentioned how we had gone to out of state to North Carolina. Is that just a courtesy thing we do, or is there some type of reimbursement on those? I was always curious.
That particular one was, uh, one of our Swiftwater people. It was a, a task force that was assembled by the state of Kansas. And we were reimbursed by FEMA for that. Uh, Troy and Hoke went as a K-19, and one of our Swiftwater people went. Um, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, they, they got all the way down there and they really didn't do a whole lot except stayed in staging and, and were returned. But yeah, that was a national declared emergency, um, and FEMA did reimburse our personnel for that. Anytime we would leave the state, it would only be under, uh, the direction of the state fire marshal. The, the regional ones I talked about earlier, we, for the, we, we can be called anywhere in the state with that, and that's basically a mutual aid situation. But if we leave out of the state, it's usually a federal type situation and FEMA is required and is reimbursed.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
All right, I had a couple of questions. I just want to confirm that all fire department personnel at this point have been vaccinated for COVID?
When you say all, not 100% of our members have, but anyone that, that we offered it to has.
Okay.
And that last number, I think that was at 35 or 36 have, have taken us up and have gone through both. Yeah, both our shots, all of it, we're completely finished for now.
So the opportunity's been extended to all, about 35% have actually taken them up on it.
Gotcha. And so we can now, um, well, hopefully respond without the, quite the degree of, um, worry that um, our personnel are going to be infected. Did you get 35%? That just seems incredibly low for medical responders. Is there any, any indications why we aren't at a higher, um, compliance rate on our, our vaccinations?
But you know, offer is it's consistent with what we're seeing, uh, nationwide, uh, response for departments. I mean, there's examples out of Los Angeles and elsewhere that have about the same response rate, but Chief, you may know some specifics.
I asked specifically on some of that, uh, we're, we're fairly new, not new, but young department. We've had a lot of younger, healthy people come on. And some of the answers I have heard were, you know, I, I, I'm young, I, I follow the P P E on calls, I, 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 I do what I'm supposed to do when I'm off the job, I'm healthy, I just don't. And then we do have some people who, again, have, have, have spread, expressed interest on the speed of the vaccine that was, that was developed. Uh, they're just kind of, kind of on the fence. First round, we, I think we only had 29, so seven, seven more people came around afterwards, after kind of, I don't know if it's peer pressure, or they did some more research, but seven more of them came around after the first wave of ours and, and went through it. So hopefully they'll start trickling, trickling in, um.
I, I, I would hope so. I worry about asymptomatic carriers, um, from the point of view of the people that we are, um, taking care of. And I know that they're taking precautions with their P P E, but, um, there's, I think there's some value in acknowledging that you're also extending that protection to the people that we're serving. Um, it's not just solely based on what's best, um, for me and what I want to do. Um, second question is, you had mentioned ISO accreditation and then also C F A I, and I was just wondering, are those, do they accredit different parts of this, of the fire department or different accreditation agencies?
No, and that, that was kind of our frustration with the C F A, and that's Center for Fire Accreditation International. Uh, that's kind of our frustration with them a little bit is that this had, being accredited has nothing to do with your ISO rating. You don't get any credit. There, there's no connection there.
The ISO is the rating itself. Okay.
Yeah, ISO is the insurance services organization. That's what determines, uh, your insurance premiums throughout the community.
Right, that's coming back to me now. It's been, it's been a few months since we had
Yeah, they're, they're two separate organizations. Another thing on the accreditation too, is since we, since as you saw, 87% of our, our work is EMS. EMS is a very, very small component of that. They're more fire related accreditation type situations.
Thank you. And then my final question is, um, I know over the last several months, actually kind of harking back to that whole ISO, um, conversation that we had months ago, have we completed, um, the inventory of subdivision emergency access roads and an inventory of their maintenance status and usability status?
That's actually more of a development services item, but they have completed that inventory. I don't, I, I know they're in communication with the Fire Marshal's Office about the maintenance status, but they've gone back and inventoried all the instances of, um, you know, individual entrances and then also looked at the code that was in effect at that time, the approvals that were in effect at that time. And then I've asked them to go back and look at maintenance requirements and confirm that, uh, if there's any maintenance to be done, that we take that up.
Thank you.
You.
Anyone else? And I don't think that we have any. Well, I guess there is one member, um, possibly from the public, or at least a name that I'm not recognizing right off the bat. Um, if there's any questions from or comments from the public, if you could raise your, your virtual hand or, um, activate your video and raise your physical hand, um, I'd be happy to allow you to ask a question if you have one. Is there any member of the public?
If, um, nobody else has anything, I thank you very much for your presentation, Chief Royce, and, um, uh, really, really appreciate, um, getting the updated figures. And it's also nice to know that we have, um, a software platform that's going to give us more accurate numbers than the cobbled together numbers that, that we've had to make do with in the past. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Just real quickly, just looking at those numbers. We had, with only five people actually coming down with it, we, we transported close to 300 patients that were suspected. And over 50 that were known when we, when we arrived. So there was quite the possibility of exposure. And there were, there were several times when we, we would transport a patient not knowing, and then they would test positive later. The hospital would get back with us or we, the, the receiving agency. But we never, on, on the transfers, we never really, if, if it was life threatening, we took it no matter what. Uh, that was not an issue.
Thank you. Thank you for, and please thank all your personnel for their service during, well, an ongoing pandemic, and, uh, we're very grateful that we can rely on you not only to transport us to some line of regional, but also within the state.
Thank you for your time.
All right, well, if no one has anything else, um, I'll see you back here in about 10 minutes. 4 o'clock. I see that we've got all of the commissioners, at least on video, and I'm hoping that we have you on audio as well. Welcome to the Monday, February 22nd, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting. First, I'll request staff confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
And with that, we will proceed with roll call.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner France.
Sir.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here, here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Hodges.
Here. With that, we will observe a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we will proceed to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, proclaiming the week of February 21st through February 27th, 2021 as Engineers Week in the city of Salina. Jared Green, President of the Smoky Valley Chapter of Kansas Society of Professional Engineers, will read the proclamation.
All right, Mr. Green, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas George Washington, first President of the United States and founding father of our nation, was a distinguished military and agricultural engineer, as well as an excellent swearer. And whereas engineers have used their scientific knowledge and technical skills in creative and innovative ways to improve the quality of life and fulfill society's needs. And whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge by sponsoring programs such as Future City Competition and Math Counts. And whereas engineers adhere to a strong code of ethics and standard of conduct in promoting personal accountability, ethical decision-making, and quality of work, such that citizens will look to engineers for their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the future. And whereas this year's theme for the event is Imagining Tomorrow, and it is appropriate to recognize engineers' countless accomplishments and contributions during the week that we celebrate George Washington's birthday. Do I need to read the rest of the section that has the mayor's card, or do I stop there?
Looks like the mayor is muted.
Sorry about that. Am I back? Yes, Mr. Green, yeah, you read through the whole thing.
Okay. Now, therefore, I, Melissa Rose Hodges, Mayor of the City of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of February 21st through February 27th, 2021 as Engineers Week in the city of Salina and call this observation to the attention of our citizens for the contributions to our health, safety, and welfare by engineers in our community and beyond.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Do, is the local National Society for Engineers doing anything to celebrate the Imagining Tomorrow theme?
Yes, it's a little bit different this year. We typically have a banquet and awards ceremony. And we'll be doing that online on Zoom this year tomorrow to recognize Engineer of the Year locally with our Smoky Valley Chapter, the Young Engineer, the Intern Engineer, the Outstanding Citizen, the KSP Award, and then our Outstanding Engineering Achievement, which this year we've awarded to the Santa Fe Streetscape with the city. Also, we've had Math Counts Competition and Future City Competition. Those both moved online this year, so we haven't been able to utilize our local volunteers like we usually do. Also, we distributed posters to the schools for the Imagining Tomorrow.
Fantastic. Well, it sounds like you've still managed to have a full week of celebrations. And thank you very much for sharing that the city of Salina is one of the awards recipients tomorrow. If you, I don't know if it's something that you try to keep under wraps until the event itself, but if there are any other recipients that you'd like to recognize, please feel free.
Well, I don't know if we typically have, but we've had to send an invitation to all of them, so I think.
I don't want to put you on the spot. I just thought, wanted to let some other people shine. I'd appreciate it. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Green, and we'll get the official signed proclamation for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will pause for a moment and have a brief update from City Manager Mike Skreg in regard to COVID-19 this week in the city of Salina.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. As I've noted before, I'm reporting data based on Friday, information released on Friday. So this is current as of last Friday. In terms of new cases, there were 59. That is 47 less than the week prior. So if we go back to January 22nd, weekly from January 22nd forward, there were 246 new cases, 196, 197, 106, and 59. So that illustrates kind of a downward trend there. In terms of active cases, there's currently 1,179, which is 72 less than the week prior. Recoveries, there are 4,572, which is 104, more than the week prior. At the, as of Friday, there were nine hospitalizations compared to 12 last week, 17 the week prior, 22 the week prior to that. And total deaths as of Friday were 104, which was an increase of 2 from the week prior. So that's what I'm able to provide in the way of information as of last Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Skreg. And something that you and I had spoken about earlier is the getting on the waiting list for the vaccinations. And there is a website that people can go on and sign up to receive the vaccinations. And it was Vaccinate Saline County, Kansas, wasn't it? I'm sorry, I'm going to put you on the spot.
That's okay. I think I have it here in all this information. But I do know is that one of the questions that came up was if people are not able to go online, what their options are, and they can call the Salina Family Health Center, Healthcare Center, Salina Regional Health Center, Salina Senior Center, and that information's available on the county's website. And they've distributed it in a number of different ways. And for the life of me, I'm drawing a blank on the web address for Saline County at the moment.
No worries. I apologize for that. And you did tell me this morning that currently there are how many thousands on that waiting list, like 60?
Yes. I had a conversation with the Health Department this morning on our weekly call. They indicated that they received 900 vaccination doses last week, this week, and they hope to receive that many again next week. They have gone through everyone that's registered in the portal. They know they've got about 1,300 individuals that qualify as first responders or K through 12 oriented in some way. They have another 5,000 that are over the age of 65. And so at that 900 vaccines a week rate, they're working their way through those eligible individuals, essentially on a first come, first served basis on the order that they registered with the portal. So they are continuing to encourage people to register on that portal. That's the way that they become aware of them. They have their contact information, and then they're taking it in the order of registration.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, Mike, if I could ask a question, I think there may be some confusion. Does that 900 doses represent the total entering Saline County? Are there other trickles of vaccine going, let's say, through drugstores or physicians?
My understanding is that's the 900 doses that are distributed to Saline County, the Health Department, the arrangements they're making with Salina Family Healthcare. The additional doses at different pharmacies and those type of things are above and beyond that. And then additionally, my understanding is that's 900 new doses. And the secondary vaccination isn't included in that 900 number.
Oh, that's good to know. That's great information. Thank you very much, Mr. Skreg. And of course, our thoughts go out to the people who lost family members in the last couple of weeks. But it sure is a good sign that we're starting to see those numbers go down. With that, we'll go to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to ask questions, provide input, express concerns on any item that is not appearing on today's agenda. And I would ask that you limit your comments, questions to five minutes. And prior to that, I bet, because I've cut him off again, that Mr. Wood is going to give us a very quick instruction on how to use Zoom and how to raise your virtual hand if you'd like to speak on Citizens Forum or at any other issue that comes up on the agenda itself.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Hodges. Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. I'll just go through this presentation here real quick. If you would like to speak during the public comment, we ask that you raise your digital hand. There's a couple of different ways that you can do that. You can click on the Participants button there at the bottom of your screen. If you're on a, this is a Windows-based machine, that will give you the Participants tab. If you click on the ellipsis to the right, or there should be a Raise Hand button at the bottom there, that will allow you to raise your hand in that way. If you are on an iPad or an iPhone, the Participants tab is at the top. You can click on that button, and that will give you the option. on that button, and that will give you the option, um, to, uh, to raise your hand there. You click on your name, um, and you can raise your hand that way, or you can also, it'll get through here in just a second. You can also click on the More tab, um, and just, uh, go down to Raise Your Hand as well. And if you're calling on a phone, there's also an option, um, if you would like to, uh, speak, you hit star nine, and that will raise your hand there, and I can give you the opportunity to speak. So at this time, if there's anybody out there, uh, that would like to speak, uh, go ahead and, uh, indicate that you're ready to go, and it looks like I have at least one here. Um, Dalton McDowell, um, has asked, I will, uh, give him permission now. Um, here we go.
Mr. McDowell?
Uh, question Commissioners, when are you guys going to reopen the Commission, uh, meetings at the, um, City County Building since they've, um, released some of their, some of the restraints on, um, people ga, our gatherings?
Um, I don't claim to speak for any of the other Commissioners, but my own sense is that that's a conversation that we need to have within, uh, the Commission, and I would imagine that it's something that we'll be talking about very shortly.
That is, oh, and another thing, um, are we giving the, what is, do you guys have a budget to fight cybersecurity risks within your own, um, infrastructure that you guys are responsible for, like the Water Department and stuff like that? So that, um, a potential case like they had in Florida last week could not, um, happen here?
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. If that's it, in terms of your questions, I'll go ahead and turn to City Manager Mike Skreg to see if he's able to answer that at this time, or if we need to get back to you with further information.
Um, yeah, Mike Skreg here, we have a Computer Technology Department, and so cybersecurity is one of their responsibilities, both in terms of, uh, firewalls and software and hardware. So one of their primary responsibilities is security issues like you described, eh, in terms of, uh, preparation, acquisition, and, and response.
Thank you, Mr. Skreg. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during Citizens Forum?
Looks like we do have another one, uh, Mayor Hodges. Um, Aaron Heckler, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, allow you to speak.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Sorry, I'm trying to unmute and stop my video. I would, I'm a little late to the party right now, but, um, so I didn't hear the very beginning because I was just getting off work, but have we talked about or discussed opening the fieldhouse, um, to get our kids in Salina? And I didn't know if that was on today or a different time.
Yes, Ms. Heckler, Ms. Hecker, it is on today's agenda, so we, it's the last item on our agenda, so, um, it, we will discuss it today, and if you'd like to provide any input, you can do so when we get to that agenda item.
Okay.
All right?
That's rather quick, thank you very much.
You bet, thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I don't see any other hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. Um, with that, uh, we will proceed to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, and-
Item 5.1, Ordinance Number 21-11054, Public Hearing and Report on Petition Number 4409 filed by Lavelle Frick Trust in Saline County requesting vacation of the Platted Woodland Avenue right-of-way east of North Front Street, except for the west 200 feet.
Yeah, Mayor Hodges, Commissioner Hoppik here. Um, before we get started, I would like to recuse myself as, uh, my, uh, business does currently have the contract, uh, between the Lavelle Frick Trust and Saline County.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoppik, I appreciate it. And you, you might want to check your audio, I don't know if anybody else was getting some reverberations, um, but I was getting, it was, it sounded kind of staticy or reverbery, I don't know what the, what the correct word is, but thank you for that, and-
I will get my volume on, and I'll be back when you're done.
Thank you. All right, um, Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, this is a petition, petition number 4409, and that petition is requesting vacation of the Platted Woodland Avenue right-of-way east of North Front Street, except for a 200-foot section adjacent to North Front Street. The petition's been filed jointly by the Lavelle Frick Trust because they are the current record owners of the property, and then jointly by Saline County because they are a contract purchaser of that property. Um, for your, to get your bearings, the Mary Dale Edition is located on the south side of East Pacific, between Front, North Front Street and North Ohio Street. The original subdivision plat dates back to 1973. Um, the whole subdivision is bordered by Ohio Street on the east, the Indian Pacific Railroad tracks on the south, Street on the west, and Pacific on the north. The whole subdivision contains 45 acres, and it was originally divided into 61 individual lots. This property's historically been zoned residential, uh, but the majority of the acreage has been cultivated as agricultural land. There was a replat and reconfiguration in 1995 to create a building site for ADM Milling, and then the Fricks, uh, reconfigured Woodland Avenue as part of that and turned it into a dead-end street. It formerly was a looped street that ran up and connected to Pacific. In December of last year, the Saline County Commission approved a contract to purchase 18 acres of the Mary Dale Edition from the Lavelle Frick Trust as a location for a proposed new Saline County jail facility, which had received voter approval in November. The purchase contract is contingent on obtaining acceptable soils reports and receiving all required planning and zoning approvals for the project by the city. Um, as a first step, the design team working for the county observed that the platted right-of-way from Woodland Avenue runs right through the center of their proposed building site, and needed to be vacated to allow them to move forward with their design. So they have requested a, uh, vacation of that right-of-way east of North Front Street, except for the 200 feet closest to Front Street, which would be retained as, as right-of-way. Um, I think Mr. Wood may have a, uh, aerial photo that shows the shape of a flag-shaped lot, um, but it's a bit of a flag-shaped configuration with 200 feet of frontage on Pacific Avenue, but with no actual frontage on North Front Street. And so the, the preliminary design or intent at this point is that all public access in and out of the site would be from the driveway connecting to Pacific. They have indicated a plan to construct the west 200 feet of Woodland Avenue to public city street standards. That street segment would provide a second way into and out of the site for emergency vehicles such as police and fire apparatus or, um, ambulances. Prelimarily, they plan to construct a secure gate at that terminus, and all public and delivery vehicles would enter via Pacific Avenue. We discussed, uh, with the county's design team, the requirement that dead-end city streets terminate in a cul-de-sac, and no turnaround is shown at this stage. Um, we are still at a preliminary design stage and still considering a number of configurations, but at this stage, they're not showing a cul-de-sac, and had some discussions about making that a one-way street westbound so that there would not be a need to provide a turnaround for eastbound traffic, but that hasn't been finalized at this point. There were some other alternatives that were considered to maintaining that 200 feet as a public street. Um, one of those would be to vacate Woodland all the way over to Front Street. That would require going back and obtaining the consent and participation of the Lavelle Frick Trust because that property's not part of the county's acquisition or part of the future jail site. Um, eliminating that as right-of-way would also create the potential for a landlocked parcel. Um, there's a lot 18, whose only street frontage is on Woodland Avenue. We also looked at the possibility of retaining the right-of-way but letting Saline County, uh, construct a private drive within that public right-of-way. Um, city attorney reviewed that option and, and found that to be potentially problematic in terms of allowing construction of what's essentially a private roadway within the public right-of-way. So the purpose of having an advertised public hearing is to provide notice to potentially affected property owners and also to public and franchise utilities. In this case, the Lavelle Frick Trust and the county are the only abutting landowners, and there are no, uh, property owners that would, uh, be affected directly by the vacation. Um, there's really no impact on traffic, the street's never been built or opened to traffic, and, um, the property to the west does not directly abut this right-of-way in question, so they were not part of the notice area. I did want to point out, which maybe staff didn't do as good a job as they could have in their, um, report, but there is going to be, uh, as a step two, an application for creation of a planned development district for the jail and law enforcement center. This will involve, uh, rezoning of the property and advertise public hearing, notice to neighboring property owners, and review and approval of a site plan, a final site plan for the jail project itself. It'll be reviewed by the Planning Commission and the City Commission. And so that, that is the next step in this process. Um, where we're at today is that the, the designers wanted to get some indication from the City Commission of whether they were supportive of vacating this right-of-way so they could be confident moving forward with locating the building there. Um, there are no underground public or franchise utilities in the right-of-way as it's primarily been an agricultural field. Um, there's no objections to the vacation from utility providers. Uh, based on Kansas statutes, we've provided some potential findings for you on page three of the report, which could be incorporated and have been incorporated into the ordinance for your consideration. As far as fiscal impacts, all the costs for constructing the new street pavement for Woodland Avenue would be borne by Saline County. However, as a public street, that 200-foot road segment would become the maintenance responsibility of the city long-term. So we have provided, uh, four alternatives for you on page four of your report, and there could potentially be more alternatives to, than that, that we could explore further. I also wanted to clarify, um, that there is an opportunity for the Commission to identify conditions or stipulations that you would like to see addressed before there was a second reading of the ordinance, because this ordinance will require a first reading and a second reading. So if you agree that no private rights will be injured by the proposed right-of-way vacation, the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience if this right-of-way is vacated, um, you could approve the attached ordinance, vacating the platted right-of-way as requested on first reading. A second option would be to direct that the county go back and that the Fricks, um, go back and, um, do further discussion and negotiation to, um, consider vacating the right-of-way all the way over to Front Street. This would require Saline County to negotiate an access easement across the property between North Front Street and the jail site. Um, that is not the request that's before you today. You could postpone consideration of this, uh, petition and further continue the public hearing to a future meter, meeting date if you believe additional information is needed from staff or the petitioner, or you could deny the petition if the Commission finds that it's not in the public interest to vacate Woodland Avenue to accommodate the jail project. So, um, when we're talking about a 200-foot street segment, we're talking about options of having a hammerhead at the end of that, a circular turnaround, or the county requesting a waiver to have no turnaround. None of that has occurred at this point. The county's designers' concept of having that be a one-way street has not been, um, determined at this point. There's no design plans yet for Woodland Avenue, and so the, the preliminary development plan that will be submitted with the county's planned development district act, application will actually determine the final configuration for access and turnaround. It's just not, um, in a place where it's in a final form at this time. So in terms of any of those options, if you were to choose option one, you could identify certain conditions or stipulations that you want to see, um, happen between any first and second reading. You would have the option of deferring second reading until the planned development district site plan has come before you for your consideration, so you can tie those two together. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that you might have. Um, just to say that, uh, there's still quite a bit of dialogue going on right now with the county's jail designers, and this came forward first because they would like an indication that the City Commission's willing to vacate that right-of-way, which tells them they can place a building there.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Are there any questions from the Commissioners? I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis?
Uh, Mr. Andrew, if, if the, uh, eastern part of Woodland Worth continued into what looks like a, a driveway that encircles the entire property, that would no longer be a dead-end street, correct?
Well, the, the purpose of the turnaround or the, the cul-de-sac is, it's twofold. It's one, for public safety purposes, so that a fire apparatus or emergency vehicle doesn't have to back out, but can turn around and, and get back out of the area. The turnaround or hammerhead is also there for drivers who may have made a wrong turn, who might be trying to make a delivery, and they can use that to turn around to get back out. So the, the, uh, the, there is a plan for a secure gated, um, a access gate at the west edge of the circular drive for the jail project, and the only vehicles they envision coming through that would be emergency vehicles, um, responding to the scene. So if you had a passenger vehicle or a delivery van, and they turned on Woodland and went up to that gate, they're not getting through that gate. So that, that's, that's the question for, um, the need for a turnaround at that location.
Right, that, that part I understand, but just in that diagram, it looked, and this may, it may not be the plan as it is, as it exists right now, but it looked as though Woodland sort of had a, intersected a driveway, if you, if you put the marker on-
Yeah. So Jake, Jacob, there's, you can, there's a thin black line, that's right where those blue lines intersect there. Right, right where he has that marker, that's going to be a gate. So there, there would be a gate right there, and so no, no vehicle coming from that direction can get to that circular drive. There's gonna be-
But that road, in this picture, it looks like it's intersecting a road that cuts across it at, it may be 105-degree angle there, but, but is that just an artist rendition of what it might be, or, and not the way it is now?
Well, I've been very careful to label this as conceptual because this isn't the plan that they have filed for the city's review and consideration, but the plan that they do file will eventually come to the City Commission.
Right, and that, that's what I was gonna get, if, if-
I'm not seeing any kind of-
Right, if this is not, if this is the, not the plan that's being submitted, but is the plan that would be, if this is the way it actually ends- is the plan that would be, if this is the way it actually ended up, then there would be no need for a, uh, called, no, large turnaround? Or, or would there still be one, still be a need for that?
Well, staff perceives a need for some form of turnaround, because I'm not seeing the intersection that you're referring to. The way that that, the preliminary design is that there would be a 200-foot public street that would extend east from Front Street, and that street would run right into a locked electronically-secured gate.
So where, where would the cul-de-sac be in relation to that gate?
They, they would have two options. Their, their options would be, they could, they could go back to the fricks, and they could get some right of way dedicated by the fricks to construct that cul-de-sac west of the gate, or they could, they could shift the gate and their design over to the east a little bit and construct the cul-de-sac on the county's property.
Okay, I, I see where my mistake was. I thought it was on the east side of that blue line, or would have been. Okay, I'm squared away now.
Okay, so everything to the right of the blue line is acquired by the county, everything to the left of the blue line is retained by the fricks.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Anyone else have questions or comments?
I do.
Okay.
You know, my initial concern on, on reading this information was that if we take the cul-de-sac out and make it one way, it just as surely impedes access to Lot 18 as if we took the right of way out. In other words, Lot 18 becomes stranded in that case. And, and I, I don't see a, a solution for that in the blue sheet. Now, it's my understanding that because this is preliminary, there may be some other options available further down the road. But I would certainly hope that when we, when, if we approve this vacation, that we condition it to the effect that Lot 18 is kept full. You know, that's, that's one lot, but it's pretty important to the folks who own it. And, you know, I, I, and, you know, and if it's, if it's a two-way street, then there's a cul-de-sac required. So we have two alternatives, neither one of which is particularly satisfactory, I don't think. So somewhere down the future, maybe at the consideration of the planned development, we need to address that.
Well, just, just for your-
Jacob, could you put the map up? Sorry, Mike's Craig here. Jacob, could you put up the plot map, so just for clarity, when we're talking about Lot 18?
That, you might have, he might have to use that aerial photo, because the, I don't, most of our parcel maps don't show the platted lot boundary.
There we go.
I think that one does.
Yep.
Yeah, that's Lot 18, and so if you make that one way, there's no access to that lot.
Well, one, one alternative that the staff has been bouncing around and we, it has been used in other, other situations, one option, and not saying that that's the one that will be chosen, but one option is that the, the LaBelle Frick Trust as owners could agree to merge Lot 17 and 18 together, and through covenant stipulate that they have to be developed together as one, and stipulate that access will be from North Front Street. And if they were to do those things, then that's a potential solution which eliminates the need for accessing Lot 18 from Woodland. But that is, that is just one of different scenarios that we're, we have been looking at. All these different scenarios require different levels of consent or participation by the LaBelle Frick Trust.
Yeah, just, just looking at it, if they rotated the lots 90 degrees, then they both have access to Front Street. And eyeballing, it looks like they'd be of similar size, although the shape would be a little bit different. So there are some options moving forward. Okay.
So the one thing that I, we didn't do, and I didn't do well in our written report to you, is to clarify that there is a step two, and that step two involves approval of a preliminary development plan for this project, and the city commission is the final approver of that plan. So most certainly, the resolution of the turnaround design would have to be in place by that stage, and we didn't do a very good job of explaining that this is kind of a preliminary step.
Mr. Andrew, based on what you had said earlier, we could adopt this ordinance on first reading if we chose to today, but then postpone second reading until there was a planned development, there was a development plan actually for us to look at to confirm that there wouldn't be these issues? Did I, did that correct?
That, that is certainly an option, because what, what will happen is, there will be a, on that agenda item, you will have an ordinance that would change the zoning classification of this property to public use, and then you would have a, a site development plan that went with that, and so the second reading of the vacation ordinance could be a companion item to those, and that would allow you to be satisfied with the site development plan in circulation before you gave final approval to the vacation.
Thank you. That might be something to think about. Any other commissioners? With that, since this is a public hearing, which I think I neglected to officially open, do we have any members of the public that would, that have questions or would like to comment on this item?
I think we do have representatives of the applicant, if we want to extend the invitation to them as well.
Absolutely, I'm sorry. If the applicant would like to speak, I'd be more than happy to, to recognize you if you could raise your, either raise your hand on Zoom or raise it within the camera, we can get you unmuted and you can participate.
I don't see any hands at the, okay, there we have one. Mr. Lane, I will give you access here.
Excellent, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Lane.
Okay, I just had to make sure. I, I'd like to reiterate Dean's point. We, we do plan to have a option as it relates to that area he was talking about in the PDD, so we'll be working through that, and we anticipate providing a solution. And we've got a handful as well as designers, so our anticipation is to do that. We recognize what that is. And really, when it comes down to it, the 200 linear feet of road is really, although it's access for that Lot 18, it also really, for our site, is just to allow for emergency egress from the standpoint of a fire truck, ambulance, those types of things. Because the way we've got it set up, the ring road allows for the fire truck to actually have all access to, to the building itself in case of a fire. So that's the reason for the ring road. And so, again, I'm, I don't want to make it complicated, but I do want to work with this group, and we've been working with Dean to come up with a solution, so we'll continue to do that, to make sure we get it to what it needs to be, but we'd like to make sure that that occurs within the PDD. And on the vacation piece, I mean, if the county's planning to purchase this lot, or these lots, and put a building on it, having that road run right through there just doesn't make a whole lot of sense if you sit and think about it. So that's, that's the reason why, and it made the most sense to get that started now, than to sit here and try to do that two or three months later. So that's the other reason why we went ahead and got started early.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Is there anyone else? Any questions for, from the commissioners or Mr. Lane? All right, with, with that, I guess we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Carl Ryan, Commissioner Ryan here. Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 21-11054, vacating the platted right of way from Woodland Avenue as requested on first reading.
A question, does that include deferring the second reading until such time as we're considering the planned district?
If that allows a second, yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve on first reading, ordinance number
Mayor, uh, city attorney, would you like your attention?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Bankston.
Still muted, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was just trying to get unmuted quickly and didn't expect you. The question I had was, if, although the consideration on first reading is certainly fine, as you are looking to potentially take that approach, the question that comes to mind is whether you wish to articulate any conditions upon which you would want to be sure that the applicants were addressing between now and second reading, so that it's clear that it's not just a matter of progressing to second reading at some point in the future. If I'm correct that there are expectations that the commission might wish to articulate, I think you would want to do so at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Bankston. Mr. France, if, if you'd like to reiterate the, the conditions that we are looking to satisfy at the second reading?
Well, the only, only thing I'm really concerned about is making sure that the status, that Lot 18 does not become landlocked as a result of this. That could have some adverse results for us, as well as the county or the, and the Frick Trust, and I just think we need to make sure that that gets addressed in the planned development.
So just, just to reiterate for everyone, this action is to approve ordinance number 21-11054 on first reading and deferring the second reading until we have a development plan paying, that addresses access to Lots 17 and 18 at that time. Does that satisfy?
I just had one question-
I'm saying my dad as a motion maker.
Is that all right? Okay.
Uh, one other question, Mayor, and for consideration by the movement and the second year. Am I correct also that we want to be sure that that final design has a code compliant, the east, at the east terminal, if that's the right term? The reconfigured retained right of way, am I correct that the governing body is also concerned that that have a code compliant, either by whatever means, assuring that, no, I don't know if everyone feels like that goes without saying, or whether that is something that you want to specify at this time. Right now, to be code compliant, that would take, am I correct, Mr. Andrew, a cul-de-sac?
Yep. It would take, it would take a cul-de-sac unless there was a option that made it one-way westbound that still preserved the access to Lot 18 and didn't result in it being landlocked. But at this point, a two-way public street, the code compliant result would be a turnaround that consists of a cul-de-sac turnaround or, or a hammerhead turnaround.
It was my understanding that that can be waived in some circumstances.
It, it can be waived as part of the preliminary development plan review. I've been hard pressed to find any cases where it has been completely waived, but it is, it is the requirement that you have a cul-de-sac turnaround can be waived if there is justification for such a waiver.
That is my, prompted my reference to code compliant. It would either be the installation as currently required by the code, or if a different approach were taken, when it's all said and done, it would be code compliant.
If, if you're taking that general definition of code compliant, I would say yes, of course. But it seems like there are a variety of options to be considered that may involve a turnaround or may not involve a turnaround, or a hammerhead, or may involve a one-way street, or reconfiguration of the lots. It seems like there's quite a, quite a number of options to be considered, and I don't want to unnecessarily limit that at this point.
But on, on the other hand, I wouldn't want this Commissioner Davis to open us up to having to sit there and consider 10 different options. You know, if it's code compliant, you know, that's, that's the, the desired response we want brought to us by the time of the second reading. We can always consider something else, but I, I would hate to go into something counting on us waiving a requirement that we have on the books. If that's the case, there's no point in having it on the books if we know we're gonna waive it anyway.
I guess I would look to Commissioner Ryan as to whether your, your, your original motion has, has, has had one clarification, is adding the component about a code compliant ingress or turnaround.
Well, with it, at the city attorney's recommendation of the term code compliant, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think if that doesn't work out, we'll find some solution, but in the general sense, code compliance makes sense. But I think we're early on in the review of all of this, so we just need to take this first step. I'm fine with that language if the second is fine with that.
I'm fine with it.
Right. There's been a motion and a second. I'll restate this one last time, to approve on first reading, ordinance number 21-11054, deferring the second reading until a development plan has been presented that addresses the accessibility for Lot 18 and establishes a code compliant ingress or egress on the east side of the development. We'll have a roll call, please. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck?
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges? Aye. That motion passes 4-0, and I would ask that Mayor, or Commissioner Hoppeck, he's back with us, great, thank you.
Mr. President, to the commission, we've been told that the planned development district application should be filed this coming Friday, so this, this will be moving forward, and it'll go to the planning commission first.
Great, thank you for that update, Mr. Andrew. That will take us to the consent agenda.
Mayor Hodges, I would like to remove item 6.3.
All right, we'll remove item 6.3. Could I ask the city clerk to read the, the consent agenda items, please?
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of February 8th, 2021. Item 6.2, resolution number 21-7938, authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the federal Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program in the amount of $18,475 to be utilized for technology enhancements. Authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with Celine County. Item 6.4, approve the change order number two for the 2017 Water Main Replacement Project Number Two, project number 70016, Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, project number 2957.
Commissioner Hoppeck here, does, does this sound any better?
Yes.
Okay. I, I went out and came back in while you guys were in that last item. I would move that we approve consent agenda items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.4.
Commissioner Ryan, a second.
We have a motion and a second to accept consent agenda items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.4. We have a motion and a second to accept consent agenda items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.4. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. And that will bring us back to item 6.3. And I guess I will turn that over to Commissioner France and Director Natalie Fisher.
My, my concern is, first of all, I think this is a, is a positive step. It establishes a procedure that, that follow year after year after year. And that's one of the reasons I asked for it to be pulled is I think it's a, a significant enough change that we ought at least have the opportunity to talk about it. My, my other concern is, well, it's not really a concern, it's a request for information is, is I would like to see how the proposed formula works in a relationship to the current, to the, the discussion we had last December about the, the fund going forward. In other words, had we had this in place then, what would the results have been in terms of the range of fund balance that would be acceptable? And I, and I think staff has that, if they could just share it, that would be great.
Okay, I'm happy to answer any questions specific to the policy, but just to give you an idea in terms of calculations, tentatively, when I applied the calculations defined in the proposed policy, and just to recap, it looks at 18 months worth of claims, and I did include administration fees with those claims because when we incur claims, we also incur administration fees. Based on information provided by the consultant, the, the formula includes what is considered our terminal liability, which means in the event that we would change providers down the road, what expenses would we still have on the books to incur? It includes our financial exposure, which is the difference of our stop-loss attachment, meaning at what point are, do we reach the most expense that we can have in a year? And then our stop-loss picks up, our, our aggregate stop-loss, meaning for all of our planned participants, less the expected claims, which is the number provided by Blue Cross Blue Shield Kansas during our renewal. And those two numbers added together gives us our minimum fund balance recommendation. And I'm going to say again, tentatively, tentatively, when I ran our numbers, we are looking at 2.245 million dollars for our minimum fund balance. When we then run the calculations for our maximum fund balance, it takes those same numbers, and it also adds one more month of claims. Again, those are averaged over the course of the last 18 months. In this instance, we're looking at tentatively what was incurred the plan year by month, and then the last six months of the previous plan year, and that maximum fund balance currently equates to 2.734 million dollars. So a range of approximately 2.2 to 2.7 million.
Is that, is that based then on the numbers we were given as a, probably it was called option B, that included the prescription plans last December, I believe it was on the 14th?
Correct.
Or have those numbers been updated beyond that?
Yeah, this would have included the option B, which included our prescription, and that's where the, the stop-loss attachment point was about 7.3 million. I will say, if you go back and you compare it to the numbers that Mr. Charlesworth presented in our October 26 study session, our numbers are slightly higher, and I attribute that to the difference in claims. His period of time that he used wasn't a full 18 months, and then it's pretty common as we get later into a plan year that our, our claims do trend up a little bit. This year, that's definitely not a surprise, but just in general, later in the plan year, it, it's not uncommon, common for our, our claims to trend up because individuals reach their maximum out of pockets, so maybe there are some electives. So historically, that's what we attribute that to. So when he ran his numbers and presented, he didn't call it exactly minimum fund balance and maximum fund balance. I could look up the exact term that he used. I want to say it was just one option, but his was about 2.4 million.
Okay, no, that's fine. I, I just wanted to make sure I understood that that was the basis. You know, I think it's a pretty sound way to do this. You know, it considers our exposures, considers our history, and that terminal balances, while we would hope we never need to use it, it's definitely a, a risk out there when you get out of a, a self-insured plan, you're liable for those expenses. And so we certainly need to carry enough to cover those. I'm okay with it as, as presented, I think.
So just to, just to recap, instead of having a set amount like 1 million or 2 million or 3 million dollars that we, we tag with this account, it's going to be a more accurate reflection on a calculation of what we, an overview of what we've done for the last 18 months, so it can adapt accordingly.
I, I think so.
Okay, all right.
In my view, it's tied to the actual risk that we are exposed to, instead of just picking a number and saying it ought to be, you know, 1 million or 5 million or whatever, so.
Mike Skreg here, I would add, and it's also tied to our most recent experience.
Yes.
So you combine that risk and what we experienced in the prior 18 months, and we are making this calculation annually as we close out a plan year.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just one that just occurred to me is, at what point during the year would be, we'd be establishing this? Would this be a part of the budget process in the summer for the following year? Because at that point, we would have pretty good information from the previous plan year, or would it be a part of the discussion in November, December, when we do our renewals?
The, the policy provides that it's 45 days following the conclusion of the plan year, and then we're also looking at adjusting our plan year, as we previously discussed, to.
February 31st. It'll be February.
Year and get our budgeting, our, our estimates in, in a hopefully a more timely manner so it fits into our budget cycle.
Okay.
And one advantage of the later start is that 2021 will probably be a little more accurate for predicting your next year's expenses than 2020 is going to be for 2021.
Yeah, in fact, you may have noticed, there's language added to this policy specific to COVID because of the concern that, that deferred elective approach, both from the, the medical providers and from individuals, may cause a little pent-up demand that we may see used up coming out of COVID. So we actually did add some language in section B about the consideration of the impacts of COVID.
I did it. One other question, in the case of the fund balance going too low, there's some language that triggers action by the city manager to make some hard decisions and adjustments in, in premiums, et cetera. Is that just an automatic fill-in-the-blank, this is the formula and that's how it goes? Or are those general guidelines as to what would happen?
General guidelines, and I expect we'd be back to the city commission to, and we, we've had the luxury for a number of years of not having to raise these rates or make significant adjustments, but typically when we do something like that, I'd come back to you for ratification.
I think section B2, B1, no, B2 says, calls for the discretion, direction of the governing body.
Right. Are there any questions or comments from the public on this item? Nope, okay.
Commissioner Hoppick here, Mayor Hodges, I move that we approve consent agenda item 6.3.
Commissioner Ryan.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda item 6.3, resolution number 21-7940. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
That passes 5-0. That will take us to item 7.1.
Item 7.1, authorize the purchase of portable sports court from Connor Sports for the Tony's Pizza Event Center to replace the current court purchased in 1999 and declare the current court surplus property.
Right.
Good, good afternoon, Mayor Hodges, members of the commission, members of the commission. Yes, this is a follow-up to resolution number 21-7932, which was authorized February 1st, asking you to authorize the purchase of the portable sports court from Connor Sports for the Tony's Pizza Event Center to replace the current court purchased in 1999 and declare the current court surplus property. The replacement of the current court and declaration of surplus property in the court purchased in 1999 was authorized during the March 2nd, 2020 city commission meeting by a vote of 5-0. Due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 pandemic, this purchase was put on hold. Tony's Pizza Event Center reached out and got new quotes for courts, and the recommendation is the purchase of a new court manufactured by Connor Sports Flooring in the amount of $109,994. It's recommended by the general manager of the Tony's Pizza Event Center, Susan Traptan, who is on the Zoom with us. Excuse me if you have any questions.
All right, are there questions from any commissioners?
Commissioner Hoppick here, I would just ask Ms. Traptan, I'm sure she's reviewed these, is there, as far as quality and longevity, there's no difference between the Horner and the Connor floors?
She's muted. Yeah, you unmuted me now, I'm here. Yeah, as far as industry standard, the Connor is considered a premium floor, while, while Horner is an acceptable choice. In this specific instance, we felt that obviously having a new floor versus the Horner, which is the secondary option, is a used floor, having a brand-new floor is going to allow us additional standings, and obviously it's a purchase we don't want to make very often, we're going to get the most longevity of a brand-new court, in addition to a longer warranty and a better pad system.
Commissioner Ryan here, is the manageability of the court the same? I mean, do you deconstruct it and take it down, set it up? Is that similar for the different brand?
Yes, it's, it's, as far as all the new products that we shopped, it, it is similar as far as the setup and take-down process, which for us, that can equate to, you know, three or four times a year needing to be put up. And that was something that in our old floor, when we purchased that, it wasn't really made to do. It was more of a floor that was, was meant to be put down and left, and these are all a portable-style floor.
Anyone else have, have questions for Ms. Traptan or, or staff?
Commissioner Davis, just one question. At this price, where's the financial break-even point for just paying for this outright as opposed to financing? I mean, is there, is $100,000 way over that point we consider not stretching the payments up?
The mic's great here, I don't know that there's a calculated break-even point. One, one way to look at it is the life cycle of the purchase, and so as you finance something, if it matches up with the life cycle of the purchase, you're kind of spreading that expense across the, the life, and the beneficiaries are paying that over time. I guess you could look at just the interest rate and that added interest cost compared to the, if we were to pay cash, and the given climate, interest rates on, on borrowing are extremely low, and interest rates on investing are even lower. So it's pretty nominal in either instance.
If I could just jump in and follow up on Commissioner Davis's question, so what's the life cycle of the basketball court, or either for Ms. Traptan or Mr. Skreg, versus the length of financing term that we're looking at?
I'll defer to, to Ms. Traptan on the life cycle of the court.
Sure, I think, I mean, I think an expect, an acceptable life cycle would at least be 25 years. I can't really speak to the financing part, Mike might speak a little bit more directly to that, but I can tell you that when we look at these events on an individual basis, for example, state basketball that we are able to host, obviously because we have to have a court to something we don't have in the arena now, those events, it's common on normal years for those to be worth, you know, 300 to 400,000 dollar economic impact to the city of Salina, that's, you know, generated through visitor spending, hotel revenue, and things like that. So, you know, we typically use this court for both state basketball and state volleyball. And like I said, so if you're looking at a return on investment, for me, that, that's, it's pretty quick as far as a community standpoint. Obviously, us and the importance of being able to continue to host these style of events at the center is very important, and a new court is needed for us to keep those contracts with KESHA in the near future.
Oh, absolutely. I didn't mean to imply by my question that it was.
Oh, yeah.
Just looking at, you know, if, if it has a 25-year life cycle and we're paying it off for 30 years, you know, it's just, I think that's where I was going with that.
Good afternoon, this is Debbie Paff, Finance Director. Our intended life debt service on this is 10 years. We were intending to fund this 10 years, and as you may recall, back in March or February of 2020, we were actually going to pay cash for this item out of the Tony's Pizza Event Center Fund, because it did have some excess funding available in it. But with COVID, that fund balance is not sustainable at this point to be able to pay cash out of that fund. If you so chose, we could pay it out of another fund, but that wasn't the intent at that point.
I, I would say that the staff report says that we acquired the existing court in 1999, and I don't recall if that was new at that time or if that was also a, a used court, so that's, you know, 22 years. So I, I think that Ms. Traptan's estimate is somewhere within, you know, being reasonable.
And that was a used court, Mr. France.
Yeah, I, I seem to remember that, but I didn't want to go on record as saying that. I was 10 years old when we got it, so.
It wasn't, and it wasn't exactly intended to be used as we used it, and being taken up and down like it was, even.
So I don't think we have to worry about it wearing out before it's paid for.
No, I think big expectation of this style of court would last even longer.
And it sounds like, yeah, the, the cost of the money is not going to be that great to finance for the 10 years.
Would anyone like to see a rendering of the court?
Yes.
Why not? It was in our package, I believe. Yeah. Okay.
How do you reline it for volleyball?
So, here's a detailed process, so it's broken up into all these little different segments. I don't have a rendering for volleyball on here, unfortunately. But then what we'll do is we go on there and re-tape the outer edges for volleyball to make it work. So it's not uncom, completely uncommon, but we do a nice job of being able to do the segments of the panels and have the logos in full. I think we always try for.
Yeah, I was going to ask if the logos would show, or if that was just not, something nice for the rendering.
Nope, that's exactly, that's the placement, the planted placement of the logos, and then it doesn't quite show on here, but then the, the middle would be a lighter, lighter color, and then the outside will be a slightly darker stain. That's kind of a new trend that you see in courts, and actually going away from a center court logo does help with us not having a strange half graphic when we go do volleyball also.
Thank you. Any, any, any other questions or comments from the commission? Do we have any members of the public who have questions or would like to offer comments? I, yeah, I see Ms. Whitman has her hand raised. We'll get you unmuted.
Okay, my question is this, from a volleyball perspective and standpoint, because I've been to the state volleyball tournament, have you checked with KESHA? I know what we put out there is legal right now, but typically, when you take away those other panels, the girls are limited to six to eight feet before. other panels, the girls are limited to six to eight feet before they're going onto the cement, when they go onto the cement, then they're running out of bounds, uh, it's a possible injury problem. I just wondered if KESHA had spoken to you about the possibility of leaving the basketball floor completely as it is, and it's really pretty simple just to drill four holes through the wood, through the cement, and then just put the poles that you're putting up anyway, without moving the entire basketball court. The sleeves and stuff are, I mean, it would maybe cost a thousand dollars easy.
So, the new court comes with a customization for volleyball with the, those uh drilled in also, does that answer your question?
Great, so then my question though is, are you still going to disassemble the basketball court in order to make it a volleyball court? I mean, why not just leave the basketball court as is, and yeah, if you have your four holes there, you wouldn't have to disassemble your basketball court, it would be a safety feature for girls playing uh the state tournament, that they're not running off of the wood, which is two to three, four inches high at state tournament.
Um, so, we have talked to KESHA about doing a different edge on the, the side of it, um, because I, I think I know the drop that you're cons, that we're talking about here for safety concern, but the court does come up and down, um, just because, you know, for example, I have state wrestling this weekend, I go to dirt floor and then I go to a basketball court, so there's really not a way for it to leave, to leave the court all assembled in a, no matter what setup, um, but we have talked about a different edging if needed.
Because I'm like, this is no different than if you walked into our high schools at Central, South, whatever, um, that's how those holes are put in, I mean, I, it's just from a safety thing, and I, I've been to the state tournament the last fifteen, twenty years uh there, and it is always a topic of conversation.
Yeah.
And so I worry about KESHA saying, hey, we're going to go somewhere else, it was the same way it was in Topeka, and uh, they don't, I don't think they, they don't host there anymore, they changed their floor.
Yeah, but we've had several discussions with KESHA about the court that we're looking to purchase and making those adjustments if necessary, yes.
Great, good, thanks.
Ew. Is there anyone else who has a question or would like to speak on this item? All right. Think I'm getting the high sign from Mr. Wood, so I'll bring it back to the commission for any further discussion or for action.
Commissioner Davis, I move to approve the purchase of the Connor Sports Four and continued declaration of surplus property on the court purchased in nineteen ninety-nine.
Commissioner Hoppeck, second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of a portable sports court from Connor Sports for the Tony's Pizza Event Center to replace the current court and declare the current court surplus property. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much to all who were here for that. Um, we'll move on to item seven point two.
Item seven point two, consider contracts for twenty twenty-one pavement-ceiling projects number two one zero zero three and two one zero zero three B.
All right, Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. This is the first of our twenty twenty-one uh sub-CIP pavement-ceiling program. Uh, this is known as basically just crack sealing, crack sealing the roads, sealing the um cracks, and trying to hold our asphalt roads together prior to um a micro-surfacing or a uh U-Bass, um, as well as doing some work on some concrete roads prior to U-Bass as well. And then, um, to kind of follow our cycle that we have, that we've proposed, that we talked about with you all last fall, um, our budget just seems to be getting bigger on this, um, just feel like it's a good maintenance strategy to try and get on these roads a little bit earlier, and we've uh looked at that this year, kind of since our, our meeting in the fall, and know that it's going to be a little more expensive to, to uh either two contracts or one larger contract every year to really uh keep up and tackle this. So, we have a, a, a higher-than-normal crack seal program or pavement sealing program this year. Um, we've proposed to cover that with kind of some of the savings from last year, and felt this would be a good year to, to get started, and we had good bids, and a lot of people interested in it, a lot of contractors were interested in it, so we felt like it was a good time to try it. Um, the maintenance flyer that's in your packet, that's kind of going to be for all of our upcoming projects, that's what we'll put in each packet and try to limit the background a little more, and just that way you can look at all five or six of our uh pavement can, uh pavement management, um, projects are listed in that, um, that flyer, and kind of our cycle, and uh then we'll keep bidding each project this year. Think that we shouldn't have any more, our, our budget that we set for twenty twenty-one should be um about right for the rest of the projects, but the crack seal, this pavement-ceiling project was just one we wanted to see about making a little bit larger. Lastly, that this, it is a little bit unique because we are putting some street sweeping in there this year for the first time, we've struggled with um our cracks, our concrete roads haven't been, um, had a lot of work done to them over the years, so when you go to blow out a, a crack or a uh, a joint or whatever that's on the uh, the concrete road, there's just a lot of debris in there, and so we've struggled with keeping up, our own guys keeping up with our, our uh, oh, the street sweeping this year, that, that did add some cost to this as well, and so we think that's going to work, but it's also first time we've tried it, so we'll just have to see how it goes. We typically just have to do that on a concrete street, the asphalt streets are usually not, not near as dirty, and the cracks are not as large, so we don't have to worry about blowing a whole bunch of dirt and debris out of those near as much as we do on the concrete streets. So, yeah, that's a long, little bit more of a longer background this year, I'm hopefully one of our more simple projects, but it's a, it's a big project and very important. I will uh answer questions.
Any questions from the commission? Hearing none, um, I, I guess I, I had a question, um, in terms of the bid from SuperCeiling USA LLC out of San Antonio, I saw that it didn't meet the bid specifications in terms of um an alternate material, um, is, is, is that just something where sometimes it's, I don't know the first thing about, I mean, it's like, is it tar, is it, you know?
Yeah.
I, I mean, like, how many different things can you seal cracks with?
Right. That's a really, that's a really good question, a really good question, really interesting that we had a contractor that was interested in doing it a different way, so it was um surprising that they bid it the way they did, and really, after talking with them, um, there's no way for the price that they bid that they could do it the sa- in the same fashion as we've had before. Now, what's, what is interesting about it, they're looking to be approved by KDOT and to be work, working in other cities with this, this newer method, so we do believe that they'll be a contender eventually, but right now, the, the material they're proposing just wasn't, wasn't the same, and just hasn't been approved by KDOT, and so we really don't feel like we can practice or be the guinea pig for them yet, and especially at that rate, it was almost like they just didn't, haven't did a lot of projects, there's just no, it's really, they believe they can use less people and put down less material, but it's, it's also problematic because our, our bids are based on per pound of material that you put down, so it just really, it was really just a weird bid, and they, um, I believe we will see them again, but just, just not this year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stack, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
If there aren't any further questions from the commission, I will open it up for public questions or comments, if there's a member of the public that would like to comment, please raise your hand and we'll get you unmuted.
Hands at this time, Mayor Hodges.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wood. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Commissioner Hoppeck here, it looks like we need to do two separate motions, so I would first of all move that we award project number two one zero zero three, twenty twenty-one pavement ceiling to APAC Kansas, Shares Division of Salina, in the amount of two hundred and four thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety cents, with a five thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollar and ten cent construction contingency for a total authorization of two hundred and ten thousand.
We have a motion and a second to award project number two one zero zero three, twenty twenty-one pavement ceiling to APAC Kansas, uh, could we have a roll, roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye, motion passes five zero, and that takes us on to the companion twenty one zero zero three B.
Commissioner Hoppeck, um, I move that we award project number two one zero zero three B, twenty twenty-one pavement ceiling to APAC Kansas Inc., Shares Division of Salina, in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-seven cents, with a nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollar and thirteen cent construction contingency for a total authorization of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Commissioner Davis, second.
We have an, we have a motion and a second to award project number two one zero zero three B, twenty twenty-one pavement ceiling to APAC Kansas, uh, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Uh, aye, sorry.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that takes us to item seven point three.
Item seven point three, authorize the city manager to execute an authorization to proceed an agreement to pay with the Dragon Corporation for the work plan for consulting services at the former Schilling Air Force Base site.
All right, Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, um, Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities, um, much progress has been few months on the former Schilling Air Force Base project, uh, I'll begin with, uh, the former Schilling Air Force Base site, um, environmental project management agreement's been executed amongst the force line of public entities, uh, the United States District Court has approved the consent decree, and uh, the, the really great news is the city received the cash settlement of sixty-five point nine million in from the United States government, and most recently, we finalized negotiations of the amended consent agreement and final order with KDHE, which amends the twenty twelve consent agreement and final order. This document defines the responsibilities for the preparation, excuse me, and implementation of the remedial design and remedial action at the site. Going back to the management agreement, uh, that agreement delegates the administrative oversight of the remediation to the executive group, which is a chief off, executive officer from each of the SPEs, slide of public entities, and it also designates the city as the contracting authority for the executive group. Now, the intent with that is the executive, executive group will review and make recommendations uh for the city commission to execute. And uh, the item for consideration today is a work plan from the Dragon Corporation, and it falls under that management agreement. The work plan, which was attached to your uh staff report, defines the scope of work and estimated costs for the time and materials for a timeframe between December of twenty twenty and March of twenty twenty-one, with an amount not to exceed of twenty thousand dollars. This agreement is intended to fill a gap between when the consent decree was approved and when we anticipate the major contract for the uh, uh, from the Dragon Corporation for the design bidding and et cetera for the remediation work out at the site. And uh, in general, the executive group uh, um, approved this document at their um January meeting. To give you a little insight on what, I think Greg Bingston, city attorney called it, the mega agreement for the city, the executive group, the city and Dragon Corporation staff are currently working on uh contract negotiations for that remedial design and remedial actions. Uh, it's a very detailed scope of work, uh, with a not-to-exceed fee, we'll present that to the executive group, and then it'll be brought to the city commission for uh their action as a contracting authority. The target date for this is April of twenty twenty-one, and uh, going back to the document for today, the management agreement uh indicates that Dragon's monthly invoices will be submitted to the city, they'll be approved by the executive group, as this document was in January, and then any payments will be made from the former Schilling Air Force Environmental Fund, uh, with approval from uh the Slide the Airport's Chief Executive Officer, and uh, again, the total amount for this agreement today is twenty thousand dollars. Uh, I've identified four options for the city commission, the first is authorize the city manager to execute an authorization to proceed an agreement to pay with the Dragon Corporation for the work plan for consulting services at the former Schilling Air Force Base site. Authorize uh the agreement with amendments as the city commission deems appropriate, third option is postpone and provide staff direction regarding additional information, and fourth option is vote to deny, staff recommends option one, at this time, I would be uh willing to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Tasker, are there any members of the commission that have questions on this item? All right. I will open it up for any public questions or comments, are there any members of the public that have a question or a comment that they'd like to share at this time, please raise your hand, either virtually or physically with your camera activated.
I don't see any at this time, Mayor Hodges.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wood. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Commissioner Davis, I move to authorize the city manager to execute an authorization to proceed an agreement to pay with the Dragon Corporation for the work plan for consulting services at the former Schilling Air Force Base site.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute an authorization to proceed an agreement to pay with the Dragon Corporation for the work plan for consulting services at the former Schilling Air Force Base site, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye, that passes five zero. Um, thank you, Ms. Tasker, it's exciting watching this get to the next phase of, of the plan of the remediation, thank you for all your hard work.
Very exciting to move forward at this time, thank you.
That'll take us to item seven point four.
Item seven point four, resolution number two one dash seven nine three six, appointing members to the Convention and Tourism Committee, Salina Airport Authority, and Solid Waste Management Committee.
Um, are there any questions or comments from the commission regarding these board, board appointments? And do we have any questions or comments from the public regarding these appointments?
I don't see any hands.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Wood. Um, I'll bring it back to the commission for action, and also just a thank you to Chelsea Andrews for her service on the Convention and Tourism Committee, Kristen Gunn, and Todd Roberg for their service on the Salina Airport Authority, and Garrett Morris for his service on the Solid Waste Management Committee.
Mayor, I'm, this Commissioner Ryan, I move we approve resolution number twenty one seventy-nine thirty-six.
Commissioner Davis, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number twenty one dash seven nine three six, could we have a roll? nine, three, six. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. Motion passes five zero, which will bring us to item seven point five.
Item seven point five, resolution number two, one, dash, seven, nine, three, nine, appointing members to the Law Enforcement Citizen Review Board.
Right. I guess I will look initially to Mr. Skreg since he wrote the staff report, but I think that this was primarily on my shoulders. So I'll let you give the summary, and then if there's any questions or comments from the commissioners regarding the process, I'll be happy to, to take those.
Thank you, Mayor Hodges. I wasn't sure who was going to look to who on this one. But as, as you well know, as a city commission, on, you passed ordinance number twenty, dash, eleven, oh, forty six, on December fourteenth of last year, which set up the Citizen Review Board in response to quite a bit of deliberation in Citizen Forum on, on your part. We then initiated the typical process of expression of interest, soliciting expression of interest forms and received ninety two of those. This is a newly formed board, so it's a little bit different than the, the action you, you just took for appointments to standing boards and commissions. But you've also then had ongoing conversations about the review process and, and submission of your input to Mayor Hodges, who I'll defer to her to go into detail about the effort that she's taken to, to review those and put together the recommendations before you today. But what I would tell you is the, the way the ordinance is set up, the way our resolution is set up, both of those, I expect that they're nominations by the mayor to be ratified by the city commission. We are, here we are in February making the appointments, and the ordinance provided for one year, two year, and three year terms, and our resolution then provides for ongoing reappointment in September. So if you look at the resolution twenty one, seventy nine, thirty nine, you'll see designation of a one year term with an appointment till September first of, of a particular year. So that's more than twelve months, but that's to get those one, two, and three year terms synchronized with our standard reappointment process in September. Other than that, I think there's been communication from individual commissioners to Mayor Hodges in terms of feedback on different nominees. I'll defer to the mayor to, to share with you what she'd like in terms of the extensive process that she went through, and you should have attached to the staff report a copy of the resolution itself, making the appointments, the ordinance that created the, the CRB, and then some correspondence from Mayor Hodges about the selection process. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions and turn it over to Mayor Hodges for additional details.
Thank you, Mr. Skreg. Just for the benefit of those who may be watching or listening, we had discussed a process several weeks ago regarding making these appointments. It was my goal to stay as closely to our normal board appointment procedure as possible, recognizing that we have a lot of appointments to make, and that this, there's been a lot of community discussion about this board, and it seems particularly important to ensure that each commissioner's wishes are taken into consideration. So each commissioner submitted seven, seven nominations for the board for the seven public positions, and they ranked their choices, and I scored them accordingly. From a total pool of ninety some applicants for this board, we received twenty four unique recommendations between the five city commissioners, and after initial contact, three of those nominees withdrew their names from consideration for, for various reasons, moving work obligations. And from that point, I, I believe I spoke to the top fourteen or sixteen candidates and did my best to take into consideration each member's preferences, as well as the stated goal of maximizing diversity and representation of the board. So at this point, the proposed citizen board, citizen portion of the board consists of three women and four men, three black members, two white members, one bilingual Hispanic member, and one Native American member. And the proposed board includes two candidates from Commissioner Davis's selections and three candidates each from commissioners France, Hodges, Hopick, and Ryan's selections. That's just the way it happened to work out, but it, I think it does represent that these are all people that we had enough confidence in, that we were willing to make those recommendations. And based upon the commissioner's selections and rankings, contributions to the CRB's stated goal of diversity, follow-up phone interviews that I did with the candidates, and individual affirmations of eligibility, I made the following proposed nominations for seven, seven citizen CRB candidates. I proposed Rakita Davis, Julius Griffin, Todd Hadnot, Teresa Hernandez, the very Reverend David Hodges, who I would like to note is no relation to, to my family in any way, Josh Massey, Deborah Shetler, and as the law enforcement designee, Aaron Melby. And with that, I'm definitely open to questions, comments, concerns from fellow members of the governing body.
Commissioner Hopick here. First of all, I would like to thank Mayor Hodges for the time she's put into this. When it moved from December to January, I, or my term to yours, I realized, you know, that might have been the best thing that happened to me during my term, because as I reviewed these names, you know, I think we could have gone, you know, fifteen deep, you know, or whatever, and, and I do believe that Commissioner Hodges has taken a really hard look at this, taken into account the names of, of all the commissioners, and, and I think come up with a, a group. I think if we all did our own, we'd have, you know, five different slates, but I think this group looks like a group that will be able to fulfill the, the wishes of, of the commission. And so with that, I, again, I would thank you for your hard work on that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hopick, for your kind words. This was, it was very helpful to bounce some ideas off of you as you, because you'd given it some thought as well, and it was very helpful. And to be honest with you, all I was, I was very encouraged by the amount of overlap that there was between our, our five different category, different candidate selections.
Yeah. Commissioner Davis, it's, it's one thing to sit there and go through three or four applications for one spot on another citizen board. To sit there and go through ninety two requests, knowing that you're not going to necessarily talk to any of these folks, it's, it's a hard process, but I'm actually surprised that you only had to come up with twenty four unique applicant, or, or candidates. And I think that would suggest we were probably looking for the same type of character. Yeah. When, when I think of the type of people I would want on this board, the folks who, and I, when I went through them at first, I turned them all down so I wouldn't see the name or the ethnicity, and just read the bottom two thirds of the sheet, and then through those came up with my, my list. But I, I, I think you have a board here that will be open, not quick to, to, to judge, and able to handle the amount of, of work that this commission's going to have a lot of brain work that it's going to have to do, not just be a review board, but a proactive board. And I think you did a wonderful job in your process and in your final selection.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Something I do want to reassure all of you about is one of the things that I did go over with, with each candidate is their ability to be objective and neutral, to, to hear every case with, you know, starting from a place of objectivity, as well as confirming that they had both the amount of time that this board may require and the flexibility of the time that this board may require. And I just want to thank all the applicants, because that, that was not a stumbling block for any of the people that I interviewed, and I just really appreciate their, their generosity and their civic spirit in helping to get this important board off to a really good start.
Commissioner France, I would, I would like to say that I think we have a really outstanding group of appointees from an outstanding group of candidates. And, you know, if we did this three different times and three different years, we'd probably end up three different sets of appointees. So the, the depth of the field was really good for us. And it was, as Commissioner Davis noted, a very daunting task to wade through all the applications and, and come up with the list of names. But I'm, I'm pleased. I think all of these people, I don't know all of them personally. I do some of them, but I think all of them show promise of, of taking a, an unbiased stance on whatever issue they, they may look at. And we have some really wonderful mix of backgrounds in terms of both occupation, education, ethnicity, gender. So I, it's a, I think it's a good group and a good start.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Ryan, here I am. I'd echo really all of the things the other commissioners would say, and I would just add that I appreciate your willingness to actually interview the candidates. That's a very thorough and above and beyond aspect to this that I sure gave you a lot of insight about the different candidates. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Are there any questions or comments from the public?
I don't see any hands raised.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. With that, I will bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Commissioner Davis, with great anticipation, move to approve resolution number twenty one, dash, seven, nine, three, nine, appointing members to the Law Enforcement Citizen Review Board.
Mr. France, I second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number twenty one, dash, seven, nine, three, nine, appointing members to the Law Enforcement Citizen Review Board. And again, I would just like to acknowledge these folks, Rakita Davis, Julius Griffin, Todd Hadnot, Teresa Hernandez, David Hodges, Josh Massey, Deborah Shetler, and Aaron Melby. Thank you all so much, and thank you to everyone who submitted an expression of interest. And if you weren't selected for this board, I'd really encourage you to go back through the other boards and commissions that we have openings for and see if one of those inspires you to submit an expression of interest for that, because we can use all the smart, talented people that we can get our hands on to, to help move Salina forward.
That's an excellent remark, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm always looking for, I'm always, I'm trying to, to get volunteers. At any rate, we'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes five zero. Thank you all. That will bring us to item seven point six.
Item seven point six, reopening the Salina Field House with COVID guidelines.
All right. Who's going to be presenting on this? Is this Mr. Schilling?
It is, but he's muted.
Well, it's a quick report.
There we go.
You can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Great. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Travis Shaley for the Salina Parks Recreation, Recreation Superintendent here. As you recall, dating back to March of two thousand twenty, you were forced with some very, very difficult decisions of, of closing the Salina Field House and canceling recreation programming and such. And then along the way, found some solutions, you know, to reopen the golf course, to use volunteer groups for the summer baseball and softball program, finding way to get outdoor soccer going. We, as staff, programmed. And the, all this was done under COVID guidelines throughout twenty twenty. And then the governing body elected to open the Salina Field House back up in, in October two thousand twenty, and this was done under COVID guidelines as well. During that time, there, we scheduled daily rentals, we scheduled weekly turn, weekend tournaments clear out to May of two thousand twenty one of, of this year. And then October, or excuse me, November twenty third, the governing body elected to close back down the field house. The indicators were the rising cases, the hospitalizations, and, and the deaths. And then since then, I think there were some graphs provided to you in your packet. Those, those indicators that you provided for us are showing a decline. And then as of today, the new Public Health Order increased their capacity to, from twenty five percent to fifty percent. With those two indicators is why we're in front of you today. We also included in our packet the COVID guidelines for the Salina Field House, just to refresh your memory. And the only thing, a real change to note would be placing the responsibility or the wholeness of maintaining that fifty percent back to the tournament director. This starts with, with myself or staff communicating with the tournament director weeks in advance. We do have their history as far as how many teams or how many courts they've utilized, but I really would like to communicate with them on the front side, given their plan, how are you going to stay within the fifty percent capacity, and make sure they have the COVID guidelines in their hands and have those discussions well in advance. The normal, what we do normally is that week, they, they give me a, a schedule of, of their games, how many courts they're using, and then I could view that and see if there is any concerns, and then really narrow down what our plan is for that particular event. On the fiscal note, you know, to, to meet the Public Health Order cleaning, sanitation guidelines, we do have staff on site to do those, but we would get those common touch points of maybe the doors, the tables, and clean those. We do have a fogger to, to access to the bathrooms and, and those type of things to keep the sanitation. And then if necessary, we would hire additional staff for that particular tournament and pass that additional cost to that particular user group. Before I go into the recommendations, I think it was Commissioner Davis that maybe had a couple of questions, and I did do some research, and hopefully you don't mind. I did, the first question was, what are, what are other facilities doing that are comparable to the field house? Wichita Far Hall is a very comparable facility. They are currently allowing four spectators per participant for a fifty percent capacity. Lawrence is another facility, and they are at a fifty percent capacity as well, and their number is five hundred and twenty five people. New Century Field House, that is in Gardner, Kansas, and they started, they opened their facility with, in the fall, and they've kept the same policies ever since. They are transitioning or anticipating changing these moving into the spring, but they stayed with these particular guidelines, and that was one spectator per participant. Wichita Hoops is another facility, and they are currently at four spectators per participant for a fifty percent capacity. The second question that was, that came up was, what, what are our schools doing, and what is CACIA doing? I, I did make some calls there, and Ken Stonebreaker, he is the Athletic Director for the Salina South, and he also serves on the CACIA board. So kill two birds with one stone there. They are, the Ark Valley Chisen Trail rules state they are a twenty five percent capacity. They are, the Arc Valley Chisum Trail rules state they are a 25% capacity. And the reason why they did that was to be inclusive. And that meaning, they want to include not just the participants, let's break it down to basketball, on the basketball court, but they want to include the dance team, the band team. And when you include all those participants, they had to keep at 25% capacity. Otherwise, they would have gone at the 50% capacity or two spectators per participant. So they, there's anticipation there that their spring sports will go to 50%, but that decision has not been made yet. CACIA made a call into Mark Lentz, he's the Assistant Executive Director for CACIA. And when they got winter sports up and going, they were at zero spectators per participant. Since then, they graduated to two spectators per participant. And then, just recently, January 29th, they increased theirs to four spectators per participant or a maximum of 50% capacity. Now, an interesting item to note there, say if they were hosting an event in Saline County, which, you know, as of yesterday, we were still at 25%. If they hosted an event in Saline County, they would abide by that 25% and modify their spectators to accommodate as such. So I hope that information helps Commissioner Davis or all the commissioners. And with that, I will move on to our recommendation. I'm sure there'll be discussion, but as option one, authorize the reopening of the Salina Field House with a 50% occupancy and within this modified Salina Field House COVID requirements and guidelines to include provisions for tournament directors to provide a compliance plan for the public health order. Option two is to postpone consideration for the Salina Field House to reopen it to a later specified date and provide staff some direction. City Commission would like to request for further consideration. And then option three is to keep the Salina Field House closed. With that, I will give it back to commission for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Shealy. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Davis?
Commissioner Davis, I'll start with the easy one first. Is the tournament director responsible for checking temperatures on the way in the building?
Great question. We do have a temperature taker right at the front door. So that is included in the COVID guidelines, as are facility COVID guidelines. You must take temperature as you're entering the building.
So a city personnel or volunteer would be doing that as opposed to the tournament director?
Yes, usually upfront, there are city staff and the tournament staff monitoring that. So they do take their temperature, they do more or less go up to a counter. Our COVID guidelines are sitting there for them to view if they chose, choose to do so. And that's where they'll take money or, you know, take gate. And then there is a temperature taker right there. And in order for them to pass, they take the temperature, it gives the green checkmark and indicates the temperature, then they can proceed entering the facility.
Mike's Craig here, just as a clarification, when we say temperature taker, that is a station, kind of a kiosk that they walk up to, then, well, you might envision with a staff person sticking a thermometer to their forehead. So it gives a readout as each person passes.
All right. Next, much like my, I guess, analogous situation, my question would be, if a regular tournament, regular time, too many people in the building and the fire marshal comes by and cites someone, if there are too many people in the building with it, who is cited, the tournament director or the city?
We would expect the tournament director to be responsible for compliance and, you know, if anything, we'd be trying to monitor that in advance and have them clear out the building. But as a building owner, I can't say that we're free of the possibility of being cited.
All right. And third question right now, I've asked before about the availability of taking the feed from the in-house cameras on each gym, maybe running each one through a separate YouTube channel for those who are out in parking who can't get in because of the occupancy. Is that feasible to do? I mean, Gym Two, they on YouTube channel too, and call it whatever you want, because the cameras are there and, I mean, relatively the next.
We do not have that capability of streaming outside the building, but we have that capability, which is very unique, by the way. We do have cameras or monitors in the lobby. And COVID or no COVID, there are actually people who prefer to be out in the lobby. And I'll give you an example of maybe a mom with a young one or something like that, or a person who don't want to hear the noise or that type of thing. They prefer watching the games from those monitors. And in this case, that helps us spread out the spectators and the people in the building.
When folks, and I'm not an expert on this, but when folks do live YouTube feeds from various activities around town, are they doing anything special that we wouldn't be able to do? We would just take the output from that set of cameras and hook it in?
Dr. Davis, we have a closed system at the field house, so it's not hooked up to the internet any way, shape, or form. It's only within the field house that we can broadcast.
All right. Okay, that's all we have for now. Thank you.
One else. I will jump in, I had a couple of questions. So the, when a spectator or participant enters the building, there will be some kind of a city representative that will do the temperature screening. What happens if the participant or the spectator at that point entering the building is not wearing a mask or is not wearing it appropriately? Will they be denied entrance?
Yes, those are, that's another specula, that's another requirement of the facility is wearing a mask and taking temperatures at the gate. So that's where we can, that's where those requirements that we do require, and we catch right then and there, is temperature and masks. And we, when we were open in November, we did have very few, but we did have some extra masks here available in case they forgot those in the parking lot or whatever, so we can cover those situations as well.
Gotcha. Whose responsibility will it be to monitor the spectators especially? I mean, obviously, if you've got the athletes, they're not going to be masked. But in terms of monitoring and enforcing the masking, once they've crossed the threshold and they've been vetted by city staff, whose responsibility is it to circulate and remind people that they need to have their masks on or ask them to leave in the event that they will not wear masks?
Sure. When we were open in November, we did have a couple of events, and I was walking around, city staff was walking around, and it, people were very compliant. The thing we ran into is that they pulled it down to get something to drink or something, and then they didn't put it back on. But we walked around and all we did was this, and they just put it right back on. And so we did not have any issues with that besides reminding people, because it was pulled down.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Sure.
Anyone else from the commission? If not.
You know, if I might, I do have one comment, and it's not, I think the guidelines are good, and we've obviously thought through this. You know, one of the things I think that we're going to have to struggle with as a body is that COVID is not going away. We're not going to get to zero cases in the foreseeable future. And so we're going to have to deal with circumstances where we want to establish some degree of normality, like opening the field house for entertainment balanced against the community risk. And that risk isn't going to be zero. It probably, you know, maybe Dr. Davis can chime in, but it probably never will be. And we will deal with future waves, as we saw last, last late fall, you know, and we're just going to have to be ready to take that on when it happens. But, you know, the new normal is going to be some risk of community spread of COVID. That's just a fact of life. And so we will, you know, I don't expect us to get to zero. I expect us, hopefully, we'll stay at a relatively low level for a good period of time now. And hopefully, we can get back to some normal recreation programming, you know, not just the field house, but our summer programs or baseball. The aquatic facility, I would like to see open in some way, but we're going to have to, we just have to accept that's going to be on our plate for the foreseeable future. And I think this is a good start. We can see how it works. If we have issues, you know, we can alter our approach accordingly. So for what it's worth, you know, I've come to the, to accept the fact that this is just going to be something that's going to be on our plate from time to time as we move forward.
Commissioner Hoppick here, I would agree with Commissioner Franz. And I think the thing is, we have, we've seen how the schools have been able to do it in a, in a manner that seems to be successful. I know currently, locally, the YMCA is doing it. We have other, as Mr. Shealy said, there's other facilities doing it. So we're not in, you know, we're not, the first might be closer to the last to actually open. And I think we're taking the necessary precautions. There's no 100% guarantee that there couldn't be spread, but I think for the, for the community, not only for tournaments, but for those teams wishing to, locally to use it, and for practices, I think it's time that we make that step, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. And we have to continue to be vigilant in our surveillance. You know, if numbers start spiking, you may have to come back a third time and make some alterations. But I don't think this is a situation in which we need to at all feel bad about being last. I think we've shown tremendous restraint and balance and, you know, have protected our relatively limited medical capability considering the geographical island that we are. But, you know, my advice for tournament directors, and it's not necessarily a medical term or a politically swag term, but every, every team has knuckleheads. You know, leave the knuckleheads home. The folks who you know aren't going to abide by the rules, leave them wherever you come from. Yeah, most folks do do it here, but there are some who just have to break the rules because it's just fun to break rules. And if we can keep those folks out, I think we'll do okay.
I guess we'll open it up to the public. If there's any member of the public that would like to speak about this item, please either raise your hand via the Zoom option or raise your hand like Ms. Whitman is doing on the screen. And we'll take your questions and comments. I'd ask you to limit those to five minutes, please. And please state your name and where you're from. I've forgotten to ask people to do that.
Okay, I will go ahead and give you permission there, Ms. Whitman, if you want to go first.
Thank you very much. First of all, thanks to the mayor and commissioners for putting this on your agenda a week earlier than what you'd anticipated. I'm head volleyball coach at South High, I teach at South Middle. And as I stated in my emails, we've done a great job within our athletic facilities and our schools as far as keeping COVID to a minimum. Yeah, I do have a tournament coming up, and I have teams that are texting me and asking me, you know, are you going to be able to host? And part of that goes because we've already canceled three volleyball tournaments, you know, when things were higher in January and February. And, yeah, we get that absolutely. Just a couple of things I wrote down, Dr. Davis, when you talked about the spectator list, yeah, we can take temp checks as they come in. Our plan will be to, our governing body is called Heart of America, and they actually have a spectator list. So that is submitted to the teams a week ahead of time. They have to submit to us two names per spectator or four, however, what that number ends up being, and they actually have to check in. That way, if we have to do contact tracing, we have that list right in front of us. The YouTube feed is not a problem. What teams have started or have done all where is they have like one parent designated who streams it live on their Facebook page. So if anybody wants to do that, that's, that's been how they've accomplished that. As far as masking, it's kind of like when I have to walk around and tell people to get their open drinks out of the gymnasium, you know, I'm just like, it's not going to happen here. And, you know, I know what you're saying about the knuckleheads, because honestly, as a teacher going into the fall, I thought, our question overall was, what are we going to do with those kids who just won't put their mask on? That has not been an issue at all in our middle school, which has been a relief to all of us, because we thought probably that might be. But if we have masks available, then the kids have been very compliant. And I, and our volleyball teams, they want to play. You know, we all want to get quote unquote, a new normal back. And I talked to the directors from Wichita, Hutch, Hayes, and they've not had any issues as far as with masks. The, because the ultimatum of that is, if you are not going to mask up, or if you're going to try and sneak extra people in, then your team can be disqualified and just walked out the door. Not heard that happening, but I know that that has been an ultimatum that has been given at a couple of different tournaments. And I tell people, I'm getting old enough, I don't care if I hurt your feelings, and if you have to leave, you have to leave. So I think Travis knows that, but, you know, I won't make him own up to it. But, and then the other part is, for our concern is, yeah, we have, our club here, our local club, Southeast Elite, they're driving to Abilene and practicing and paying to Abilene Rec Center to practice there. We would love to see them be able to stay in town and practice. That's what we had kind of had arranged, pre-arranged before the last shutdown, and to get our tournaments going. And the other part of that is, our teams, their teams are going out of town anyway to play. So they're probably maximizing their risk and bringing it back by traveling out of town. Most of the teams that enter, particularly my tournament coming up next, are fairly local, within, you know, 60 to 90 miles. So Wichita being the farthest probably. But, you know, Erin Hecker, who's on here too, we work together, we work with Travis, and we've run our tournaments at the field house, you know, since the field house has been open. People love coming to Salina to play in our field house. It's an awesome facility. We do a good job of running tournaments, and I think Travis can tell you that our volleyball group is a very respectful group. And we've just had great success, and people want to come to Salina. They don't want to have another tournament, and it's getting too late in the season for them to find a new tournament. So we're really just pleading almost that to open the field house so we can practice, we can host tournaments, and go from there. And I'll be happy to answer any other pertinent questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Whitman. Are there any questions for, I'm sorry, Coach Whitman? Are there any questions for Coach Whitman? Okay, thank you very much for speaking to this. I see another hand is raised. Ms. Hecker? If she could be unmuted.
Hi, yes, I want to go on top of what Rose said. She speaks, but a lot of you said, I've had two, two tournaments canceled at the field house, and I've had to take them to Abilene, and people want to play. Abilene told us that we could bring two spectators in per player, and I said, mm, I'm still a little nervous, let's just go with one. So we, you know, we've been careful, hand sanitizers on all the tables, coaches and teams per HOA have tons of restrictions, like no line judges, so that the kids aren't up and around people watching. They have, bring your own pens, bring your own whistles, you know, every, they don't have normal score sheets like they have in the past. They've used their own sheets and their own pencils, so there's limited contact between supplies. So there are a lot of extra precautions being taken so that these kids can play. And, oh, I had a whole bunch of stuff to say. But I'm And, um, oh, I had a whole bunch of stuff to say, but I'm just glad you guys put this back on for tonight and you're hearing people and hopefully getting people back out there. And I know there's still a lot of people who are scared and nervous. And I am kind of one of them, but more so because my parents are very scared and fearful. But they choose not to, you know, they choose not to go. And the people who are scared aren't going to go. The people who are there who want to watch their kids, they, they video for people. And that, that's been what's nice about this is that, uh, my sister gets her Facebook page up and we're able to watch my nephew play basketball in Kansas City. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you guys and just throw a couple of other little points out there because we're, we really want to play.
Hacker, I, I've responded to a lot of emails as I know that fellow members of the governing body have, um, letting people know that we're all looking forward to the easing of COVID restrictions. But just to follow up on, I think probably every commissioner who's spoken has talked about going forward. This is something that we're, one, we're going to be limit, we're going to be living with. And two, we've just got to be conscious about mitigating as much risk as we can. And, um, I'm hopeful that.
Absolutely, I agree.
Fieldhouse safely. Are there any questions from Ms. Hacker? Okay, hearing none. Are there any other public comments?
I don't see any other hands this time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wood. All right, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
This is Commissioner Hoppick. Uh, Mayor Hodges, I move that we authorize the reopening of the Salina Field House with fifty percent occupancy and within the modified Salina Field House COVID requirements and guidelines to include provisions for tournament directors to provide a compliance plan for the public health order.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
Have a motion and a second to reopen the Salina Field House. According to staff direction, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Franz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye, that motion passes five zero. Um, thank you again to all the people who wrote, expressed their opinions to all of us. Appreciate the input. We don't have any development business. Does any commissioner have anything to be brought up under other business?
Oh, yes. I would, I would like to, um, it's not real, it's more of a, a, a request for information. But, you know, back in, um, September of 2019, I believe it was, uh, we heard a presentation. Well, I wasn't on the commission at that point, but the commission heard a presentation, uh, from the Economic Development Organization and, uh, an organization called Child Care Aware addressing, you know, childcare needs in the community. And, and my perception is now with the changes, um, um, at, at Schwann's, at Great Plains, at One Vision, that problem, that shortfall is going to become even more critical along with the housing issues. And it just seems like, you know, we, we, there, there was that presentation. And I know COVID probably got in the way to some extent, but it just kind of like it, it disappeared. And we've heard nothing since, um, as a group as to what direction, um, we might be taking. And I, I don't know if, if we dropped the ball, if we were supposed to follow up with them or if they dropped the ball and they were supposed to follow up with us. But I would like to get, uh, maybe at the next commission meeting, uh, if possible, kind of an update on where everybody is on that issue, uh, because I think it's something we definitely need to pursue. I don't have an answer, but I think it's something we've got, certainly got to talk about moving forward.
Mike Skreg here, Lauren Driscoll's on the line. I think she can make a first pass at responding to that. If there's more information to be gathered, we can certainly do that. But, um, I know she's knowledgeable on kind of what's transpired so far.
I don't know if anybody dropped the ball. I think COVID dropped the ball. Um, making certain things a challenge. I think where we last left off was there were some options out there, but still a lot of information that needed to be gathered. The Coalition, which is, um, essentially facilitated through Child Care Aware of Kansas, which is a result of a strategic planning process a couple of years ago, done with the Dan Hanson Foundation, has been moving in a direction, and that's the group that spoke to you, um, over a year ago. They have since then, their executive director has retired. They have a new executive director. And last Wednesday was the first time the Coalition has met to start moving forward since, uh, COVID. I believe Commissioner Hodges, or I'm sorry, Mayor Hodges has been having several conversations. There are some new folks that have been added to the group. Um, we've always had representation from USD three oh five, but I think a, a full-time member has been assigned to that. Uh, definitely through housing conversations, I know both the Chamber and the EDO are aware of this issue. Mitch Robinson with Salina Economic Development also gave an update on the Garden City model, uh, which I believe we've also talked about previously. They're taking an approach of building facilities and building wages in through using a unified kind of group through their economic development agency. They too had the ball dropped by COVID or not drop, but things definitely slowed. Um, the facilities that they had had planned to open already are opening this spring. So we haven't seen the flush out of that full, uh, program, but that is still in the works there in Garden. And they have been, um, working with other communities, kind of sharing their model. Uh, the current childcare coalition for Salina looks like it's going to be moving to a once a month meeting model. Um, there are minutes from that meeting. I think at this point, everybody's just trying to kind of get our feet back under us and decide kind of what, where things go from here. There's a lot of different pieces. I know Lindesberg's been trying, uh, their own approach to this. As I mentioned, there's the Garden City model and there's some things happening at the state level related to public schools and their requirement to provide childcare for children age two to five. So I think that's also changed the landscape of how childcare will look in the future. Commissioner Franz, any of the commissioners, I'm open to bringing back more data. And, but I would say at this time, what's happening is, is additional conversation kind of picking up where we last left off.
Uh, Commissioner Hoppick here. Um, I did attend along with, uh, Ms. Driscoll and, and another, a group from, uh, Salina. We, we did make the trip to, uh, Garden City, um, to hear about their program. And I guess just from a layman's perspective, I'd say that the public is probably a little bit naive about what goes into opening up a childcare facility. Um, it's, it's highly regulated and, and somewhat complex. It's not as easy as opening up a building and saying, here, kids, come on in. Uh, there's a lot that goes into it. And I think my eyes were sure opened from attending that meeting. So there's a lot of work involved to, to get to where we need to be.
And I think one of the things to remember, and we saw this in Garden, and I've had this conversation with the Chamber and EDO, and it's what the Coalition shared with you last year. This isn't just a building issue or spaces in a building. It's a wages issue, which is a kind of complicated thing. It, the question then becomes like whose responsibility it is and, and where do wages get addressed? And I think that's, that's definitely part of our problem here in this community. And one, we still haven't been able to kind of wrap our heads around and how we meet that.
Yeah, I, I would concur that, that, you know, it's not just a facility issue. It goes far beyond that. We can build a new facility or develop a new facility. And if you don't have the people to staff it, it doesn't do any good. And, and that is, I think, the primary problem from what we were told earlier is, you know, getting people who, you know, uh, are qualified to do this job and whom we can pay well enough to want to do this job, to make it a, a, a supportive living, uh, situation for them. So it's a good deal more complex than, you know, hey, just find a place and open a childcare center. You know, it's, uh, it's a lot more difficult than that.
Mike Skreg here, not to drag the conversation out further, but it is a wage issue, but then it's also an affordability issue on the family side that's, that's trying to pay for that childcare and the wages to go with it. And that's my biggest concern in all honesty is the economic imbalance there and trying to find a sustainable model, uh, which makes it that much harder.
And just to follow up very quickly on something Mr. Skol mentioned. Um, I think we all got the email from James Bowden about, um, you know, why can't we open a childcare facility in, you know, a, a, an empty building that's not being used? And that just, that it got me thinking like Commissioner Franz, that we, I really didn't know where things stood. And so I reached out and I did, um, and I, I offered, um, uh, for James to participate if he, if he wanted to, since he was the catalyst for me even reaching out to them. So, uh, we met with, virtually with Kelly Davidoff, and I may be saying her name incorrectly, but, um, via Zoom. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a little bit disheartening just because I think that there's still a lot of just conversations occurring. And it probably speaks to the difficulty of the problem from both, um, how do you, uh, pay people a living wage and attract quality people and yet still make it affordable, as Mr. Skreg mentioned, uh, for a working family to be able to access that? But it, it is frustrating, but, uh, and maybe there will be more progress to report on in the next, um, few weeks. But I think that we're largely at the same place where we were, um, in September of two thousand and nineteen.
Well, we're, we're a little smarter. And I think one thing Commissioner Hoppick and I learned in Garden City, you have to have private industry. Uh, it's much federal programs, it's training you have to do, but, uh, there are models. But we're going to have to go beyond the, the boundaries of, of just the people who are going to be using. I mean, it, it is an economic development tool. And just like any other economic development tool, those who benefit should, uh, hopefully be inspired to help cost of it.
I do think what's different though, as an economic development tool, as we're talking about housing, also a very complex issue with a lot of different facets, is, you know, we, we've talked about multiple programs that are set up to help with affordability of housing. RHID, Mih, you know, we have financing methods like IRBs. The list kind of goes on. When we talk about childcare, I got nothing. There's, there's not a lot of programs for that. There's, there is no long list of, of tried methods or, or state tax incentives to do that. So it's, I definitely think Mayor Hodges is right. There's a lot of conversation because there's not a lot of tool to grab onto. But as Commissioner Davis is saying, this is part of economic development. And I think we're not the only community grappling with this, but it's definitely what makes it part of, you know, a bigger challenge.
Well, I, I won't play all the aces on the table right now, but I'll give you a call.
You know, and I, I apologize for starting into this conversation, but I just had an increasing level of frustration with not, you know, hearing or seeing anything happen, um, that, uh, to me, it just seemed like it had gone away. And I, you know, it, it is very much related to economic development, being able to support families, working families that want to move to Salina. Um, so I'm, I'm glad that something is happening, uh, and I, I hope it continues to happen.
Yeah, my, my son is in Seattle and he told us yesterday that they just moved their six-month-old son to another daycare, which is subsidized. So now instead of paying twenty-seven-hundred a month, they're only paying two thousand a month for childcare, which is, I tell you, if you want to limit your population, that's a good way to do it. Like, and go to work, everybody take care of the kid. A lot of money.
Who's paying the subsidy?
I, you know, he didn't tell me, but I'm going to call him and find out. Because right, somebody, because that's not a, that's not an inexpensive subsidy either.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Franz. I think there's a great deal of interest in that, uh, in that whole topic. I think we're all wanting to follow up on that. That's a good.
Mayor, just, that, just one, I don't even need discussion, but just since we have the CRB seated, if, if we can really make them the, the, the test group for whatever our new citizen board educational program is going to be. And just go ahead and full gear.
And all acknowledged on behalf of staff, agreed.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I know you got it. Okay.
Um, not to keep us here overly long, but I did want to, um, give a shout out and recognize, uh, Public Works and Utilities employees that have been working really hard since the, uh, polar vortex, um, arrived. And they've been addressing broken water lines, broken water mains, um, as well as pipes in some of our individual facilities. So I know that they've been putting in a lot of overtime in incredibly uncomfortable, um, weather conditions. And I just want to acknowledge their hard work and thank them very much for keeping our water running and our, our buildings safe. And we could be a lot worse off and, but for their work. So thank you very much. Um, is there, is there anything?
I had two things real quick. One, and I couldn't, I couldn't find it, but I believe it was in our Kansas League of Municipalities. There was a, a potential legislation, legislative, uh, matter that dealt with, uh, fitness clubs being tax exempt. Does anybody remember seeing that?
I do.
And it stated if you had an issue with that, um, to contact your, um, legislators. So I'm not telling you which way you should do it, but I am going to contact mine.
Sounds good, sounds good. And I have no idea how quickly action is going to be taken on that at the legislative level. But maybe that, if that's something where it would carry more weight, if it had the, um, uh, the weight of the governing body, one way or the other, behind that in terms of making a recommendation, I'd definitely be open to, um, considering that.
Commissioners, if you like, I can find the, the timing and the stats of that. I did take the liberty on behalf of the city to respond in terms of the financial impacts that it would have and provide a comparison of kind of the service levels provided by not-for-profit, um, facilities that get it currently get the tax exemption compared to private. So I responded to some of the league's inquiries about how many private facilities we have, those type of things already.
Thank you.
Um, again, uh, to follow up on Mayor Hodges' comment, I just didn't want to push anybody to, to have my, my views, but I just wanted everybody to be aware. But if, if we want to discuss that as a commission next week or something, we sure could. So I'll let, I'll let Mayor Hodges and, uh, city manager decide where they want to do that next week. How's that? I love being able to throw stuff back on the mayor.
Thank you, thank you. As long as I don't have to make fifteen phone calls this week.
What, uh, one other thing, um, since we're talking about the, uh, uh, the number of individuals of the mass gathering, have we, do we want to discuss, uh, in-person meetings again at some point? I know there's some discussion out there. Um, I personally think it's easier for people to get on Zoom and if they want to talk to us. But there seems to be some people out there that would wish for us to get back into in-person meetings, so.
I'd be open to putting that on next week's, um, agenda as a discussion item. Um, and it maybe if commissioners have, um, any specific input or specific questions to, um, submit to staff. Um, I don't know where the other members of the governing bodies stand in relation to having received a vaccination or electing to receive a vaccination or not. But based on age and risk factors, I can tell you, I'm going to be, I'm, I'm not eligible to get a vaccination for probably the next couple of months, given the number of people that are in the queue that are already eligible. So, um, I just want to, I'll get it as soon as I can, but, um, at this point, uh, I, I don't think that's going to be very soon. So maybe we could, maybe we could discuss that at next week's meeting and come to some sort of consensus about resuming in-person, continuing solely via Zoom or seeing if there's an option to do some sort of hybrid model. Um, but I'm, I'm, I think we, we need to discuss that as a group, definitely. Thank you for.
Brought it up, because it's been brought up to me, so.
Yeah.
So I, I know I've heard from people who are kind of impatient with the Zoom thing and they, you know, this works. But I, you know, a lot of folks, myself included, just like the, like the in-person, uh, contact, even if it is at a distance, uh, it just, you get, you, it's better communication. I mean, it just is better, so.
There's no denying that. Is there anything else? All right, then I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Commissioner Hoppick, second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. See you next week.
See you all.
See you all.